...of council to order Monday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Approval of the agenda, please. Counselor Norbury.
Let the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular council meeting agenda be adopted and presented.
Secondor, Counselor Lehman, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Adoption of the minutes, May third, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting of council minutes, recommendation, please. Counselor Majinsky.
Monday, May third, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting of Council Majinsky, talk is presented.
Secondor. Counselor Kerkalka, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Any business arising from the minutes, council? Staff? Thank you. Our delegation this evening was supposed to be Tumbler Ridge and Esco Global Geo Park, but unfortunately their concept drawings didn't come in time, so they've asked to defer to the next meeting, I believe. So we'll move on to consent agenda, recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury.
Let all items from the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one consent agenda be moved for information.
Secondor. Counselor Majinsky, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counselor, like to lift anything? Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd like to lift seven point six for discussion.
Secondor, Counselor Majinsky, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So here we have a letter from Becky Fleming requesting a reconsideration for children's and babies allowed on the golf course. And thank you to Ms. Fleming for bringing this to our attention. I am not an avid golfer, so I wasn't aware that this was a rule. And for myself, I think we should be revisiting a policy change to allow for children on the golf course. For me, it comes to accessibility in terms of persons with young children being able to utilize our course and our facilities. I'd like for them to be able to take part in all that we have to offer.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Kerkalka.
Yeah, I'd like to get clarity from Counselor Norbury when you say the policy. Is it a policy or is it a rule? My understanding it's a rule. It's not a policy that was brought by council. It's a rule that was done by the running of the golf course. So it's want clarity that if it's a policy that we can change, I'm willing to change the policy. If it's a rule, I think we need to just give that direction to maybe. Because I agree with Counselor Lehman, I just want to make sure it's not a policy that we can change. If it's a rule, then we just need to get that direction to find out why the rule's there and the reasoning for it before we just start pulling it off. There could be reasons for it, but I'm not aware of.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So you are, through council, you are correct in that it is a rule that we don't have a policy written for it.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Howe.
Can we hear from staff what the reasoning is on why they don't think that children or babies should be allowed on the course? Is it an insurance issue? Is it a quality of golf issue? Or what's the thought behind it?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through council. So I'm not exactly sure when the rule was brought into place. I did reach out to our insurance provider because that is, of course, our risk and our liability is what concern is that we would have. So the district would be, would have liability protection. I have not had a chance to read through the whole liability protection agreement because there would be some things that would be not covered, which was something we needed to look into. They did suggest that we have people fill out an informed consent, but it does not provide a strong defense in, if somebody, if a child was injured by a golf ball or falling out of a cart or different things like that. So there is a risk that is associated with, but we would be able to limit somewhat if we had an informed consent signed by people.
Follow-up, counselor.
I did have one other thing. I mean, to me, there's already dedicated times for like men, women, and seniors in regular golfing years. I know COVID has changed that slightly for now, but you know, Tuesdays is usually ladies' nights, Thursdays is men's night, and seniors, I think, they do. And there's also a couples' night as well, or a couples' afternoon or something like that. So I mean, we do have dedicated times for people if there's concern about children being on the course. And I can understand there's some decorum that has to go with golf and the quality of the course. Maybe a concern of avid golfers of hearing children, you know, carrying on on the golf course. But to me, I think that there might be something here, provided that it is not an insurance type thing that's going to cost us a pile of more money to allow children to come onto the golf course. But to me, that's the conversation that we need to wrap our heads around is, is it an insurance issue or is it a quality of golf issue? And, you know, you allow this, you know, this segment of our population to be able to utilize the golf course? Does it affect another segment of the population that now wouldn't want to go there because of that? I've played golf down there a long time. I've known this rule has been in place. There's also a rule down there that says no pets down on the golf course as well, which in previous years I've seen being broken as well. So it's one of these things that if we're going to put these rules in place and bylaws that we have in place, we either enforce them or we don't. Or we get, when they come across our desk like this, we need to deal with it and have a lot of reasoning for our council why we want to deal with it and move on from it. But to me, that's the two major concerns that I see here, and I was looking for more little input from staff on what the idea was.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Norbury, then Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. You know, I wrap my head around the concerns that Counselor Howe brought up. There's some things that I think about too, you know. Where's that fine line? And I think it's, I think for us, it'd be relatively simple just to have, you know, a noise, a noise level, right? That would encompass our issues of say like screaming babies, you know, or rowdy kids. It also encompasses rowdy teenagers, rowdy adults, you know. I think we can, we don't need to lower the quality of golf out there for everyone. I may not be an avid golfer, but I golfed enough to know, like, yeah, you don't want to have, you know, babies screaming while you're keying off. I do have a question in regards to rule versus policy. How can we effect change here? Is this just like a hands-off type thing or we ask for a policy creation to address this issue? Yeah, I'm a little unfamiliar with how to change a rule if you don't have a policy.
Good question. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So rules are in place for different areas that are not, that haven't been put into policy. So if you have a rule that's listed and it's not in policy, and if you don't have it in policy, you can't enforce. But rules are kind of an etiquette of what that area is. We have rules at the skate park, they're not in policy, but they are rules for safety liability. So I guess council direction and we can implement a rule, but it would not be as part of a policy. And just as a note, we do have, I didn't mention before, that we do have youth memberships for six and up. It's the younger ones that we have no, nothing for.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So am I agreeing, would a policy better serve us in regards to liability?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. A policy would not serve us any different than what we have with our liability. It's part of our insurance. So we do have, we would be covered to a certain extent. I'm just not sure what the exclusions would be at this point if somebody did get injured or a child got injured.
Follow-up, counsel.
Yeah, just with Becky's letter, you know, I'm glad that the issue was brought up because every year it kind of gets talked about. So, you know, having a firm rule in place or just some restrictions to it. I have, I think it's great that families can get out and use the golf course together, especially when it's both parents with the kids because when, you know, one's hitting, one's watching, you know, kids, you know, a mom with babies, you know, that can get a little hectic. It's when it starts holding up play and is disruptive. And, you know, I've never been out there where I've said, geez, these kids are, you know, it's always been good. I would recommend that we would have, stick to the rules when it comes to tournament play. I think that would be a time where if they're not a paid golfer out there and it's just infants. And then just that when parents are bringing their small children out, that they are aware, they sign a waiver because a small child falling out of a golf cart or getting hit by a golf ball could be catastrophic. And that, that does scare me, but that's the risk that the parents take themselves to bring them home.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. My initial concern was the liability issue with the district. I can understand parents wanting to take their kids, and most of them, the ones you're talking about are, well, probably six, two-year-olds, so they're not going to be golfing, but they're going to be in the cart. Having them sign a waiver, even though it doesn't fully protect the district, parents also have to realize that it's, they're making the decision to take their kids out there. So really, they're responsible. They should be, they should be willing to take responsibility for what the decisions that they've made. And it's unfortunate that even though a waiver doesn't fully cover the district, I just think that we need to make sure that these parents understand that it's their risk, it shouldn't be our risk.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Majinsky.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'm going to tag along with the risk aspect here. If a parent is holding a child in the golf course, is that responsibility of the parent or what if there is a failure of the golf cart that is, we are providing from the district? As well as the pavement on the course that is on steep inclines and declines and then they get water on them and they're wet and they're slippery? Or the loose gravel? Those are all contributing factors to people falling out of carts. Even I don't see that. So to have a lot of these what-ifs or possibilities seems pretty brave for us to continue on or just saying that we can have young infants that, you know, out walk on their own or, you know, we have to be have a full hundred percent attention of a parent, you know. And it doesn't take much for a golf ball to injure a child, even if it's a bouncing golf ball. It doesn't have to be mid-flight or anything. And it's not even if it's from a different group of golfers. It could be from the same, and I've seen it happen before, like golf balls go any which way, you know, and it's, they'll hit, you know, anything, a tree off the side comes right back at you. So who's going to be holding on to that child or being the deflector of it, you know? And sometimes people get any deflect from themselves. So I can see why the letter's been put out there and the concern of having your children out there because it is a family's activity. I just don't feel comfortable even taking my own child out there at such a young age. I would love to, but I don't think it's a responsible thing like to do, especially when you're putting him in a golf cart that you have to hold on to and there's nowhere else to hold on to in a golf cart. He's in the seat, there's nowhere to strap him into. So I think the babies, the children can be changed. We can read, change the wording, but the babies, I kind of want to steer clear of myself personally, but let's see whatever else some council likes to discuss. That's my main concern is just the babies. And it's hard to say that because I know there's a lot of babies in this community and they're all young, average family, average age families that have babies right now. So it's a tough one, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's really my concern as well as the, you know, if parents are going to bring their children in car seats and want to strap them to a golf cart, they're not really designed to hold a car seat or, or really designed to secure that seat in there. So it, but I mean, you could put it on the floor as well. And I think, you know, you, all the circumstances and scenarios you brought up, counselor, I think we really have to cover those off in waiver form. But thank you to Mrs. Fleming for bringing this forward. It is something to think about most definitely. I definitely understand where she's coming from, especially when both adults golf and enjoy golfing together. I certainly don't want to take that opportunity away from them, so. This is Counselor Howe.
Yeah, just a fun thing, this is like, you know, we know how slow things move here in municipal politics, but at the present time, the rule is, is that you're not allowing children or babies on the golf course, right? So how important is this to council that we want to move this thing up? Do you want to have it on our next meeting or do you have to move on our next meeting? Like, is that how quick we want to get going on this or what?
Yeah, I'd like to deal with it. It certainly was nice of Mrs. Fleming to bring this forward, and I think we need to pay proper attention to it. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd like to pull back real quick to some points that you and Counselor Majinsky pointed out. You know, coming down to like the safety of the child, you know, I think there is a fine line where our responsibilities end and the parents' responsibilities begin. I think especially in today's age, we're starting to see where, I think it's more an individual to make these choices, what's best for them and what's best for their, for their family. And I don't think it should be something that we step over that freedom line, if you want to call it something, to restrict, restrict somebody from doing. They're making the informed choice. If this is something they want to do, that's their choice to do it. I don't know how odd to you about taking my baby out on the course, but that's my, that's my comfort level, right? But I think, as much as I support this, I still think we should make an informed decision here. So I think we should have a report from staff, you know, outlining some of the concerns that we've brought up, some potential maybe issues that we're not thinking of. Let's just talk to the people on the golf course, other golf members, see what's going on. So I'd like to bring forward a motion to bring up a report before we make a full decision.
I'll second that.
So I'll make a motion for staff to bring a report outlining changes to the golf court rule or policy creation to allow for children zero to six on the golf course.
Thank you. Secondor, Counselor Lehman, discussion? Counselor Norbury?
The reason I ask for a report is that rather than let emotions get into play here, I mean, there may be some on the other side we need to look at as well, right? And this gives an opportunity for maybe other golfers to just point out, hey, have you thought about this?
Yeah, and my biggest concern is the liability of it and the insurance, especially if the patrons are going to be using the golf cart as well, so. Any other discussion? Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as Counselor Howe said already, I think we need to make a decision on this sooner rather than later because, I mean, it is golf season already, so I would like to see it move forward at a faster pace.
Yeah. No, we're certainly not doing bylaw or three readings and adoption here, so it's not even a policy creation, so I think it can be handled in a timely matter. Any other discussion? Counselor Majinsky.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Do you think there'd be a need for a questionnaire to be handed out at the golf course or the golfers to fill out? Maybe explain some potential risks, the liabilities, and their concerns?
I, personally, I don't believe so. I think the cart, when you rent a cart, you have a contract to sign with the pro shop there as well as COVID information. I would think another questionnaire would just bog people down. Counselor Kirby.
Mayor Bertrand, until we get the report in front of, in front of council and the decision is made, what will staff be directed to do from now till then with children on the course?
It would continue with the existing rules, I would assume. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So it is staff's intent until the rule has been changed to continue to enforce the no children rule that it's there, which would be the young, young ones not golfing.
Okay. Follow-up, counsel. All in favor?
Opposed.
Carry. Thank you. Any other items from the consent agenda? Counselor Howe?
Seven point seven.
Discussion, secondor, Counselor Lehman, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counselor Howe?
So just reading over this letter here, we did briefly discuss this letter in our last council meeting. So I have a question to staff and I guess through to council is, could he, could this gentleman or this family, sorry, in a closed meeting, show us the particular houses and associated lands he would be interested in purchasing? And then allow staff and council to see what it would, if it would be acceptable for us to sell those portions he's interested in?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So as it would involve land, there would be the possibility of bringing it into, into a close because it would be a land matter and a legal matter for purchasing property.
Counselor.
So then it gets back to council, and you know, we are beating this idea around quite a bit here in the last couple of meetings, is that, is there any flavor of council to look at this for these particular individuals? Perhaps if they are able to show us a house on one, two, three street or whatever, this is the one they're looking at, and that he wants two hundred feet in the backyard, we could immediately at least tell him, no, we can tell you right now that goes too close to the roadway or it's, you know, we could at least start to give some direction to this person that maybe that's not the house that if he's looking to get more land, we would not be willing to negotiate on. At least it gives some background and at least gets our feet wet into it. Again, it's a bit of an exercise to see if there's any way we can look at some of these lots for sale. And he may be looking at areas that the land's just a no-go. It may be in areas that we don't even own. I don't know, so.
Yeah, no, and that's where the case-by-case basis is. And I think from what I read this, that's what was missing here was the information about the lots. But I do understand why this person would want to keep it confidential. So yeah. Counselor Majinsky.
It's an interesting idea. I'm just not too keen on it because every time there's a new person that wants to come to town, they might want to come into a closed meeting just to explore the idea of expanding their lot. I know this is potentially a one-off, but if it starts to happen more regularly, that there's a lot of tire kickers out there that want more land in the backyard and are seriously looking at buying lots, they're wanting to see if that, if they can entertain the idea. They have to come before council every time? That's my only concern is seeing a lot of more of this in closed meetings.
Well, sometimes having to come before council gets rid of the tire kickers too, though. Any other discussion? Counselor?
And to Counselor Majinsky's point, I mean, yeah, I absolutely hear you. I mean, if every person that came to Tumbler Ridge to buy real estate was looking to come in in front of council as well, I think it could become very onerous. But to me, I think once we start down this road and this process of, you know, we have a lady up on Bones Place, I think that's interested in one right now, and then wherever this person wants to go, is that once we start seeing if it is very onerous for us to do or takes too much time for staff, we've got to try to go through the process and try it a little bit. Because we did say we wanted to look at them on a one-off cases, one-off basis. And then if something changes in this and we find that we're being flooded with it, maybe that, that decision of council needs to change and we need to have, you know, a set policy in place for these types of land sales. But for, for me, to kind of get the process moving, I think that these are two good opportunities for us to look at to see if we can even do this, if it's a possibility.
Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. My question, I don't think it's enclosed meetings unless it's absolutely necessary. I mean, we do owe it to the community charter to be, all deliberations to be public unless required not. So, and my thought with this process for our residents is that we would be having these discussions in open meetings, correct? If we're doing the one-offs or will these always be enclosed meetings? One more question.
No, it can be neither.
Yeah, my concern does come with the time aspect. I mean, we do have, we have a bit of a bear, a bit of a bear bones policy. We'd like to see whether there are areas that can allow for expansion. I'd like to see our CEO take a look at this, potentially give them thumbs up, thumbs down, quick, you know, this area potentially, here we go.
Before.
Before we make, before we get them to come to council. We haven't really made our mind up how much land we're going to give them. What we're going to do, I think we still need to go through this slowly and people need to be patient with us.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I think this is a good starting point. We don't know the areas once, you know, the family gives the data, staff can look at it. Like you say, it might be right off the bat, that's a no-go, you're on a park, this is ground, what have you. As long as the family's willing to incur some of the costs that it might take to get some of this information, I think it's good. And then we'll also know that area by doing some investigation that, that there's, this is a no-go from here on in, so anybody upset comes in. So, I mean, we got to start somewhere. We are doing it case-by-case, so I'd be willing to vote in favor of this.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Majinsky.
Yeah, I'm just reading the last sentence here. I'm looking for an answer to this process as soon as possible. We all know how this works. It takes time. They also say in there, we have a three-month window, so they're putting a timeline on us to make decisions to make. I don't think that's the way it goes either. If they want an answer from us, it's on our timelines and we make our decisions. We're not going to be rushing to get something done because somebody will like to move here. That's just my personal opinion, and if they want to do it, they have to wait until we have all a party agreeance here before decisions are made on one of them.
Counselor Howe?
Just, just a quick point to what Counselor Norbury was saying there. I wasn't suggesting that we asked these folks to come in, I'm just suggesting that our CAO reach out to them and send a letter to get the information from them about which lots or which houses they may be interested in. And then staff shows us on a map, these are the ones they're interested in, and to at least have that conversation of is this a goal or no-go in this area. And then to Counselor Majinsky's point there is, yeah, they have a three-month window. You're correct. If we could get it done within three months, great. If we can't, we're doing what we can. And that's all I'm trying to do in this letter is at least let these people know and those that have the same interests that we are looking at and we are trying to get these things moving. We've never done it before, and sometimes when we've never done before, it either takes a long time or you don't, you don't make all the right decisions as you're doing it. And I don't look at this as a three-month window that they're giving us. I look at that he's explaining his situation and we are looking at it, can we do it in three months? I don't think we're going to send him a letter back that says, well, guaranteed we can do this in three months, but we can at least say that of the homes that you're looking at, there is a potential in this one or this two that we may be interested in selling land in those two. And it may make, may help him make a more informed decision of narrowing down his choices or seeing what we can do. So that's all I'm looking for is to just give them some response, right? If these people reach out to us, we should be given a response.
I agree, and that was my question as well. Ms. Thompson, have we contacted Mr. Mitchell at this time? Please.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So I did reply to Mr. Mitchell and send our land sale policy, which had that information there on a case-by-case basis. I knew that this was coming to council and I haven't reached out to him since. I did forward the policy to him.
Okay. And was there a response?
I received none.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Majinsky.
Yeah, no, my concern is if we don't get the ball going here and we don't respond to him, he's not going to take us seriously as well. So I want to make sure that we have some follow-up and some dialogue going forward as well and say we're not just sweeping this under the rug now and we're not going to deal with it right away because we are, so.
Absolutely. Counselor Howe?
You know, and he may not even be acceptable to this as well. He may not be willing to tell us his properties for concern that he's going to lose those properties by letting that, that information out. And that to me is against Counselor Norbury is the reason why that this should be discussed enclosed in the beginning, not the process of how we go about that, those particular pieces of land to sell them, but the ones that he's particularly interested in. For instance, if he was to pick a spot that he thinks he can buy the land behind it and somebody comes in and says, oh, I heard so-and-so's going to get that with the land behind it, and they go in and put the offer in ahead of them. That's, that's my thought process, and that's why land needs to be enclosed. But the process for going through it absolutely will have to be out. I agree.
Counselor.
Do we need to put a motion forward to our CAO to, to respond in a letter asking them about which lots they'd be interested in?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So I would appreciate a motion with direction from council on what to do.
Certainly. Counselor? Counselor Howe?
Does that pretty much sum it up? Is there any other concerns from anyone in council if us put a motion similar to that forward?
Counselor Kirby.
Mayor Bertrand, I think at this point, it's in the homeowners. He knows what our policy is, is that if he wants to move forward with this, he should he should come in and see us instead of us reaching back out to him. That's my thought is, is, you know, he's, he's can look at the information or somebody can reach out from council to let him know. But I think, I think it's in his hands now, but...
I'm not sure if our land sale policy or current one at the moment really reflects, uh, this council's intention on possibly exploring the extra land for sale. Ms. Thompson, can you clarify, please?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So the, the land sale policy was amended to have that the council would consider expanding lots on a case-by-case basis. So that's the portion of the policy that would apply to it that we amended two months ago or a month ago.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, I know, uh, thank you, Mayor. It's in, it's in the policy, but I'm just wondering if, if he's aware that, if he at least gives us the address of the properties that he's interested in, we can have a look at it. Because is he even aware of that we'd be willing to do that?
Counselor Majinsky?
Now, this is the technical correspondence, so we should at least follow up with this. Maybe ask a little bit of information and say, yeah, we have looked at this, we've discussed it already. We're looking for some more information. Proceed forward.
Yeah. Counselor Howe?
You know, and then maybe add to that, that, you know, that we are willing to look at this in a closed portion if he's concerned about talking about the laws or whatever. I, I kind of, I'm teetering on the thought of what Counselor Kirby said though, too, is that, you know, could, would it be just as good enough a correspondence to reach back out to him and say, you know, council has discussed this at length in their council meeting. Please review the meeting, like, and then they could review the meeting online. And if they choose to write in to send us a letter, then we could then view it enclosed. So kind of what Counselor Kirby said makes, makes sense to me, too. Maybe we don't have to reach out here. Just we could say to them, like, a response is that this was discussed in length in council and go to this link to watch the video, right? Like, maybe, maybe that does make more sense. I don't know. I didn't think on that a little bit more, but...
Well, I think, I don't think it would hurt myself to reach back out with a, an email or, or even a phone call just to inform, um, Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell that, um, council has discussed this. And if you'd like to pursue it further, um, I'm going to need more information. I mean, I don't think that's any harm. And it, uh, it shows that we're willing to work with, uh, with any proponent, opponent, really. So I'll make a motion that staff reach out to Mr. Mitchell to follow up on his letter dated May 4th, 2021. And, uh, to inform that council has discussed, um, his proposal. And if he would like to continue, we need more information. Did you get all that? Seconder? Counselor Howe? Any more discussion? Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. At this point, I'll vote in favor of this, of this, um, communication. But I think if there's more cases like this, this is going to take up staff time and then we'll, maybe we'll figure out a better policy for how this goes. I mean, they're working with realtors. We're going to have to start, you know, they're going to have to start knowing where that is, is, is a possibility, et cetera. But I think we'll have to look into this further on how we, how we deal with, with, uh, real estate.
I agree. I think a master plan is well-needed just to give go and no-go zones sort of thing. I agree. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Any other items from the consent agenda, counsel? Counselor Norbury?
Just a quick one, Mayor Bertrand, uh, 7.5.
Seconder, Counselor Majinsky. Favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I just want to bring this resident's attention to, uh, to register tomorrow. To get into discussion about the, the rate changes. Um, we had a delegation in last week, felt like, feels like longer, um, talking to us about the changes in our P and G rates and how we had an opportunity to voice what's been going on. Um, if we want to be in the know, should be registering to find out.
I agree. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Moving on to new business. 9.1 Pathway System Maps and Standards, a report dated May 17th, 2021, from the Interim Director of Community Services regarding the consideration of the master plan when designing and constructing future pathway systems. Recommendation, please? Counselor Kerkalka?
The council accept the specification for future, future trail construction?
Seconder, Counselor Kirby, discussion? Counselor Howe?
Uh, so the multi-use trails being a width of 2.5 meters. And our bear walks were anywhere between a meter and a half and two meters. I thought that, uh, Mr. Beal told us that the pathways had to be 2.5 meters. There was a new standard out, uh, not one that we were going to put in, but there was a new standard in the province that they had to be a certain width. Uh, because I had concerns that we were making them so wide and we were wasting all this asphalt that we could go further if we had narrower pathways, similar to the original pathways that were, were in there. And we were told that they had to be to this, so, like, is that? We're going to put the standard in now, but the standard wasn't actually there previous to this.
I'm not exactly sure. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Uh, I will respond a portion of it and then I will pass it to Director Howie. So I believe that there were conversations held on it, but we've never accepted the standards to fault, to go forward on it. So that is one thing that I found, um, when I have been going back to staff is they didn't know what standards were expected or, or wanted by council if they wanted to go below what the minimum standards were, uh, for pathways and that. So I will hand it to, um, Director Howie to respond a little bit more as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Worship, um, Counselor Howe. The, uh... Thank you. The standard of two and a half for various pathways is really in parks and provincial legislation. It's not impacting local government requirements. But, uh, having read that, I thought that the two and a half inch width was, uh, probably the best for that particular type of trail. It's the one with the most, uh, the most use, I think, uh, with the most varied. Way from, from, uh, some of these to some, uh, necessarily motorized, but you could have people using, uh, skateboards and that sort of thing, bicycles at the same time. With the bear walk, it seemed to me that it was a little less travel. It's really a connecting thing between two neighborhoods. And in the areas that we have for those, the amount of space we have, it looked to me like one and a half to two, two meters would be sufficient. And then I, I ran about five different sets of standards from other municipalities, most of which were adopted in the past five years. These are pretty much concurrent with those. Uh, the other, uh, the nature trails, it's an even wider trail, but also a narrower trail. So that you can provide everything from the same person being able to walk down a trail, the next one behind them, to, uh, somebody riding a horse down the trail at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor?
Yeah, so, so there, it seems to be a wide variety in there, like, and I guess as the, we look at the trail, we decide, get decided on is how much asphalt is going to be put on. My concern with setting this standard is, is we went from paths that were, I don't know, meter and a half to two and a half meters. We had a whole wider piece of asphalt. Not to say that there, there was anything wrong with doing the, the areas that we selected. I just don't want to see all of the areas that are a meter wide cost us, you know, two and a half times the value of, of what we could be doing. We can stretch our asphalt further if we're not making them so wide. You know, the, the area that runs down, uh, Mackenzie Way makes sense to me, like, it's, it's, you know, being used all the time. It's like I say, it's not a connecting word. But I'm, I am concerned about that. But the standard to me seems like it, it can be varied based on how much use the path has. And when we talked multi-use trails, I was under the impression that multi-use trails included ATVs. But perhaps I'm mistaken on that. Uh, but I thought that's what multi-use was, ATVs, uh, obviously pedestrians and horses. And I thought that's what, uh, our multi-use trail system was going to be used for. But I know we're not allowed to have ATVs on Mackenzie. The only other point that I pick out of this is that I have seen, and we have had a major accident in the past. Now, how that happened, there's a lot of factors behind it. But I have seen people drive down these pathways thinking that they're actual roadways because we have them so wide and we have no barricades up and we have no posts. We have nothing showing people that aren't from here that that's not a roadway. That's not a, a frontage to go down these streets. Uh, somebody went through the streetlights at, uh, Macken, by the high school or at Lumber Ridge School, drove down there, couldn't get up the path and ended up turning down, rolling their truck down. They were repaired, but still somebody made the mistake. And I have seen other vehicles down those roads. People that get partway down them and they, they realize they're not on a road and they have to back up out of it. So, you know, that's my concern about making them too wide. You make them look like a road and people utilize them for that that are not from here. So, uh, that's something, a point to ponder when we put these in place.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Should we not consider making the width, whatever width the paving machine is able to fit? Like if, if there's a two-meter paving machine or if it's a two-and-a-half-meter paving machine? So that, you know, they don't have to make two passes? Make, make it so that they make one pass and we're done?
Yeah, from what I remember, they are adjustable to whatever size, like the smaller ones. Like, uh, yeah, from what I remember. Counselor Kerkalka?
Yeah, this is my thing on that. When you, when you make the standard or this is what we agree with in the process, that tells me when we hire an asphalt company, they need to make sure they have the system built. Yeah, maybe staff says we don't want it to, two paths, two paths we've tried to be joined. We want it as a one path, uh, asphalt.
Counselor Majinsky?
Yeah, there was some discussion on being able to utilize our snow removal and to gravel and to clear in the wintertime. Now, that would probably be a factor to consider. But also I don't know if all of them are being cleared as well. So, because they're fenced off, too narrow, so some might not even need to be paved. And we had that on, on, as well as having some of this gravel or grass, even.
Yeah, from what I understand, we're not planning on rebuilding any this year. There's nothing in the budget at the moment. We're just looking for an overall arching, um, master plan with standards in them so that when it does come time to rebuild or, um, build new, staff is, has got accurate numbers to be able to estimate. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I think the work that staff did on this potential, uh, partial recreation master plan is great. I really like the idea of, of having the crowning on the, uh, the multi-use trails, having them wide. As you can see, um, you know, Counselor Kerkalka brought up, some of the trails we have are cracking, having potential issues. You can see because it's not that crown there anymore. There wasn't, there wasn't a crown created to allow that runoff. And, you know, maybe with that, um, we'll have less damage to our structure. And, you know, the people know this is going to be clear. I'm, I was on it all winter long, you know, the stroller, everything was, everything was great. Um, and that being said, we definitely want to have a certain width to allow for everyone to be able to pass back and forth. If kids on their bikes, you have, you have double baby strollers out there. I think it's good to have them wide, at least for the, um, you know, the multi-use trail.
So, Ms. Thompson, can you give us the definition of the multi-use trail? I know Counselor Howe had some other thoughts on those, so if you do have it, please?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I don't have the full recreation, um, service plan here. If you all look at your map provided, the multi-use trail could be anything that would be the red. So that is our perimeter trail to the, uh, Mackenzie. That would be what we would consider. Mackenzie and Monkman would be considered what we have as a multi-use trail at this time.
Right, so the definition of multi-use could be a bicycle, could be a walker, could be a skateboarder, could... Yeah, okay. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Majinsky?
I've just noticed now, uh, going along, um, Mackenzie, we have an ATV trail. It goes out down towards the ball lanes. But going south towards the industrial, it isn't no longer there. Um, there should be a continuation on there. It crosses the road. And then it should come back, um, kind of closer course to the mountain like parts there. All the way up towards me is a place that's no longer there. Just wondering why, because they did put in a new portion there, um, by Pioneer Drive. It's no longer on there as well. That's all been signed as well. There's actually two trails, one on both sides that are closed.
Okay. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So this, um, plan was completed in 2019 and it could have just been an oversight, um, between the drawing of the map and the, the, uh, the trails as well. So it just was probably an oversight.
Sure thing. Counselor, if you want to talk with Ms. Thompson afterwards there, and I don't know, Counselor?
And then a lot of the trails coming out from the green spaces aren't considered ATV trails as well. Some people talk about that as well. Because a lot of the ones that are coming from the backing of a lot of the properties aren't in blue. They're just, um, I guess they'd be almost covered in bear walks. They should be utilized as a TV.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Just a quick question, Clark, should we talk to the second recommendation for provision of washing?
If you'd like. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. The council explored a provision of outdoor washing facilities, particularly on well-used and longer trails.
Seconder? Counselor Majinsky, discussion? Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Um, I know this has been sort of a concern brought up by many local and out-of-town hikers to have some sort of washroom available at these trailhead, some of these trails. Fifteen, twenty minutes out of town, you're out there half the day. And I mean, it would be nicer if they had a place where they could do their business versus 10 feet off the trail or in some place, in some cases, people are barely getting off the trail. Yes, you know, so it would be nice to have those facilities on.
I agree. Counselor Majinsky?
I don't necessarily agree with them getting a trailhead or on IT trails or on walking paths for that matter. When we did the, um, community plan there, a lot of the concern was of having a washroom available at any time of the day when all the stores are closed, because that's where people use or, uh, they don't have the opportunity to go to a coffee shop or a restaurant and use a washroom. So to have something in the downtown core would make a lot more sense than to have it out on the trails where a lot of people are utilizing it late at night and stuff like that. So something that's lit, has, uh, our running water, like, because that's what we would like to see. And that was part of the, uh, the plan, was to have something like that. So the prime example is the downtown bank, because that's what they do. They have a public washroom. And, and my idea here was, um, to build something beside the pump truck by Public Works, which is kind of essentially downtown, it's hard being, it's close to the downtown core, but also a tap for, for, like, say, a bike wash as well. So you got people biking or whatever, they're hiking and they got muddy shoes or whatever. They can rinse them off with an outdoor graded water system on a timer. And then they can take it back to the hotel and clean, somewhat clean, right? So that was kind of the idea of having something that was more of a safer area as well, that's what it helps.
Yeah, and I think, um, with the new Geo Interpretive Center, I believe they were planning an outdoor, or I mean, a public washroom in that area. So I think that concept, uh, um, if comes to fruition, I think that might take care of our downtown area. But I think this would, this, um, feedback that we received through this master plan, I think, has more to do with the trails in the surrounding areas. Counselor Majinsky?
Yeah, I did ask that question, but you don't care if it's going to be taken in the local, um, as well. So then, but, you know, that's just not the problem, right?
Okay. Counselor Kirby?
Mayor Bertrand, with the export, with exploring these outdoor washrooms, would that include a contractor supplying outhouses and keeping the maintenance in the city of it? Or would that be district-built, staff-mand?
I think we have to explore all options. I think there's definitely got to be more than one or two options out there. So, um, it'll, I'm sure it'll come down to a cost analysis. So, um, it'll, I'm sure it'll come down to a cost analysis. Counselor Kirkalka?
Yeah, I didn't add your recommendations because I have a hard time with this one. So we're able facilities being locked, honest God. A lot of people using outdoor restrooms at nine, 10, 11 o'clock at night anyways. There's nothing wrong, Tumbler Ridge very small. Doesn't mean we don't have a piece here. Where do you think most people go to do drugs? Who did it? So that's my biggest concern with something like that. And then with portable at trailheads and stuff like that, I'm sorry, you see the one being flipped over now at the campgrounds. And that's going to be staff that has to go and deal with it, if if that's how we do it instead of. That's the reason I didn't add this, because I think I need to read a bit more and get my head around it. But, you know, when they're, when they're talking about putting one downtown here, I mean, I'm not sure it's under law. And then, you know, it's hopefully a delegation tonight when I've seen this in here from staff about to ask this question. The community center is open until 10 o'clock, the youth center is open until 10 o'clock. Um, big center is open, restaurants are open, gas stations is open. So there is public use washrooms within within our area, a little bit different than maybe some. But that'd be my concern there with, uh, portable washroom and then try to build downtown washrooms when we possibly have somebody already doing that.
Counselor Majinsky?
Yes, and then same with you have trailheads, which ones are we talking about? The ones that are district maintained or as well as the older, newer ones that are? Or even PC Park ones that don't even, someone don't even have washrooms every now and or disrepair. So there is definitely a cost involved when you're wanting to maintain these in service home and, uh, clean water and replace them, right?
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Um, Counselor Majinsky, when we're talking about the need, I mean, I draw my information from like the, your package. The challenges brought by residents suggest there are not enough washroom seating to build along trails. I mean, maybe, maybe they did mean downtown trails. Um, but I mean, we don't, we don't need to limit ourselves to supportive bodies. We could do some sort of semi, um, some sort of permanent structure that you'd have along the side of the road. Or, you know, you see a Denverville campsite, you just have, you know, um, you know, an outhouse there. Something is there for people to to go where they got to go. Um, isn't everyone's comfortable squatting off off a trail? You got downtown, you guys hit it.
Counselor Lehman, did you have some? Counselor Majinsky?
Well, I may take it as within the community of our trailhead. I don't think we should be looking at putting in washroom stuff at the trailheads and stuff like that. If they want to do the business, they do it before they go to the trail. Or if they have to have a little washroom in private, if you have a big, a wide open space in nature that they can do it privately, but in within the community, you don't want to be doing that where somebody up the road can see you down on Mackenzie or off of Old Green. So I would say more of something in town, because that's when we're looking at the assessment that's done with our community. What the need was for the community was a washroom for trails in and around.
Uh, I'm not sure about the privacy. Uh, next month, there's going to be a lot of mosquitoes, so, um, I don't know if you've had that experience or not, but. Any other comments? Um, Ms. Thompson, I'm a little bit confused on the recommendation, to be honest. Um, is this kind of asking staff for a report to come back or? Ah, okay. Thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, for pointing that out. That's what we're looking at, right? I'm not saying every trail system, but there are some that are big and are regularly used. Out-of-towners coming in for twenty minutes out of town. Sometimes you don't got to go until you're half an hour past your home. Listen to you.
Okay, thank you. Call the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Nine point two, skater's lobby, additional seating. Report dated May 17th, 2021, from the interim director of community services regarding pros and cons of additional seating and tables in the skater's lobby. Recommendation, please. Counselor Howe?
Discussion.
Secondary, Counselor Lehman, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Counselor Howe?
I think it's a great report, you know, outlines some, uh, some of what our ideas were, some pros and cons that maybe we didn't think about. And comes up with a, you know, a couple of alternatives here. And I actually really like alternative one. That's really all that we need down there is alternative one. Just wanted a spot for kids to be able to put their ketchup mustard on their hot dogs and, you know, put their drinks up when they're, when they're watching their buddies out skating or whatever. And that's, uh, really always looking for. Alternative one, I think, is a fantastic idea. And, uh, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but, uh, I'd like to put that one on the floor at some point.
Yeah, I agree with you and it was a good report. Thank you to staff. Counselor Norbury?
Yep, I think alternative one is great.
Counselor Kirkalka?
I think if Counselor Howe is saying of putting a motion on the floor, just put it on the floor so we can debate it.
Okay, Counselor Howe?
Okay, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we direct staff to proceed with alternative one.
Secondary, Counselor Kirkalka? Discussion. Counselor Kirkalka?
Yeah, I'm happy to be here in counsel. I talked to staff because they came up, throws a call, they came up and all done with that. Met the discussion that council had, that Counselor Howe had around, and in the guts of budget council.
Yeah, I I like this alternative because, uh, there's less, um, storage of equipment. There's less moving to clean the floor. Um, but it also incorporates a seating area to watch the game. I know myself, I like, I'm not enjoying looking at that bar going across every time, so, um, that will help. Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. And alternative one, it also says could also add USB charging. I think it should have USB charging. I think that's a great option for that, you know, being able to plug in and, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice convenient.
I would like to see that added, not good, but it's.
Okay, thank you. Point. Any other discussion? Counselor Majinsky?
Just a question on the stables, will they be fixed or will they be, uh, movable?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Um, one second. Sorry, they would be movable.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Norbury? Okay. Nine point three, community service counter. Report dated May 17th, 2021, from the interim director of community services with information on the community center front office and lobby upgrades. Recommendation, Counselor Norbury? Secondary, Counselor Majinsky? All in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Um, you know, in the essence of having something, something to debate here, I'd like to put a motion before that, um, we direct staff to proceed with option number.
Secondary, Counselor Kirby? Discussion, Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. It is my, you know, suggestion move with option two. Um, I think staff has come up with an option to hit the bare bones of what we're looking for in that area. It's my concerns. I know there are, I have other concerns regarding, um, workability in the space, ergonomics for the staff, um, the electrical upgrades. Can't have laminator over there plugged in without losing six computers. But that being said, I think this is a project we've had to, um, um, adopt from previous managers. It's a good idea that we have new staff, new faces, coming up with new ideas. Um, I'd like to get their thoughts and proposals, um, moving forward versus them having it. Got the point?
Good point. Counselor Howe?
Yeah, I'm not going to get into debate for me on this one. I think option two is the right option. I thought it was the right option a long, long time ago when we put $250,000 forward to do this renovation. And for staff to come in and be able to reduce that by ninety percent? That's what I've been looking for since I started in on council, is somebody to look at these things with a little more common sense and say, is this, does this make sense to spend this type of money on this type of renovation? Do we actually need this? Start with this. And then if it turns out that we still don't have enough room in there, change it. Come up with something else. But to reduce this by like ninety percent is unbelievable. It's awesome. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Mr. Howie, thank you very much for your, your, your contribution to Tumbler Ridge. I'm not sure if this is your last meeting, is it? Yeah, so thank you very much. And I completely agree. I, I'm, you know, it is nice to go the extra mile and create lavish and and intricate, uh, work areas. But when we're looking at functionality and we're looking to improve our accessibility, it really comes down to bare bones. So, uh, I am definitely in favor of this to start with, obviously. Counsel, um, Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Mr. Howie would like to respond for one.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted, uh, Mr. Mayor, to point out that, uh, this wasn't just me. Uh, the manager and the, uh, the foreman of maintenance both agreed. As a matter of fact, a lot of the staff, in particular in the area that's going to be affected, agreed. And also provided good ideas of how to go about doing this next step. So I just want to let you know that.
That's fantastic. Excellent. Counselor Majinsky?
Yeah, and it's, uh, kind of an eye-opener to see that we have staff who are willing to do the in-house work and doing all the renovation planning, you know, we were capable of doing that. And maybe it was the staff that brought that forward and say, yeah, I can do that or I'm willing to do that. I think that's amazing, you know? I'm always having outsourced contractors and then back on them and saying, well, you didn't do what we asked you. But now the staff are coming forward saying, hey, we can do this. We know exactly what our community needs and wants and they listen and they can do it themselves. So it's pretty awesome.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Nine point four, purchasing of crown land for residential development in Tumbler Ridge. Report dated May 17th, 2021, Director of Economic Development and Tourism regarding the ministry approval of purchasing crown land for residential development. Recommendation, please. Counselor Howe?
I'd like to read the, just the first part of the recommendation to start. That council direct administration to purchase thirty acre acres, uh, seventy-four point six acres of provincial crown property parcel E, Plan 31305, Saddle Club at the subdivision for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty, sorry, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty cents.
Secondary, Counselor Lehman? Discussion, Counselor Norbury?
Mayor Bertrand, I'll have to speak out against this, um, recommendation. Um, and I'll preface by saying I fully support, you know, rural property development in Tumbler Ridge. I think that's something we need. I just don't think it should be done by us. I think we are not a development company in town and have a concern that, um, we are going to be incurring. We're not going to be able to bring these parcels to the people that are interested in purchasing them at a price point that they are willing to buy them at. I think, um, you know, where you look at the size that we're getting, we're going to have fourteen lots. Just, just chopping it up, almost $20,000 a lot, absolutely no work done, no additional charges. I just don't think the residents of Tumbler Ridge should be, um, put in that place where they potentially be holding the bag at the end of the bowl.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Howe, did you have something?
Uh, yeah.
Counselor?
Yeah, just, and it revolves around the GST on the portion. It's just a question I meant to get in to talk to the CFO, but I didn't have an opportunity to. I would assume the district of Tumbler Ridge gets pretty much all of their GST money back, correct?
Ms. Thompson?
Correct, we do.
Counselor?
And I'd like to speak to Counselor Norbury's, uh, remarks there. I understand that he has been in opposition of this for, for a while and good reason. He has his, his thoughts on it. Uh, again, I think this is a process that if we stick to the original plan, which was to keep them at five acre lots, allow people to service them with water and sewer themselves and allow them to run whatever they should choose for heat, whether they choose to run in natural gas or run propane truck. And for them to run in their own power into those lots, we will keep the price very low. And $20,000 at this point will not be the final cost. But $20,000 for a five acre parcel in Tumbler Ridge, I think, is very marketable. And I think he will sell a lot of them. But there are going to be other lots in Tumbler Ridge over the years that may not be developed by us and may be developed by developers, uh, that will have the opportunity to have water and sewer on one and one and a half acre parcels. But for this particular style of lot of what we're looking for out there, uh, I think, I, I know they will sell. I know it's an excellent opportunity for Tumbler Ridge. I've heard it from many, many, many people that are looking for exactly this. Uh, and they still have the lumber on them, they still have the wood. We're not, we're not taking all the wood that's, that's on there. That's part of the, the government has told us that the wood is worth whatever, $50,000 on that parcel property. So there is opportunity for people to lower their costs. So if they so choose to cut down the lumber that's on their pieces, uh, there will be the requirement for a road in there. That is the part that I was concerned on when we were talking about making it a paved road with all services in it and having a loop and making it come back to the highway or, uh, in, in my mind, those types of things are, uh, unneeded at this point. Uh, we need a very rudimentary, basic rural dirt road like Dawson Creek, Checkland, Fort St. John. Everybody else has with ditches for the water to run into, not culverts, not, uh, you know, underground systems. And allow people to go in and figure out how to generate, uh, these properties themselves and to create another industry in Tumbler Ridge. And that is the, the service of rural residential lots is an industry in Tumbler Ridge that can help, uh, have other things in Tumbler that we need. So I'm definitely in support. Been in support of this since day one on council, something I've been pushing for since day one and looking forward to it being taken out.
Thank you. Um, there has been a few numbers thrown out here and, and the $20,000 is the breakup of how much the land is costing us. So at this point, if we move forward, we are $20,000 into the lot. But, um, I'm not sure where the $40,000 is coming from or where the $20,000. Like, we're certainly not going to be selling these for $20,000. Um, we still have to build a road. Um, you know, we still have other things to think about. So, um, you know, making this affordable, I think we should be looking at six digits, uh, realistically. I don't think being under six digits is going to be possible, so. Counselor Norbury, then Majinsky?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I see that as well, you know, and, you know, I'll follow up with Counselor Howe. I mean, when I was running for council, I was pushing rural lots. Because, um, on the surface, like, yeah, rural lots are great, until you start looking at this information and it's like, you got six, six digits. Like, we did a survey that said people only want five acre lots for under $40,000, right? And my thoughts is if, if we want this to succeed, we need to keep it under $40,000. And like, the only way to do that is looking at reduction of services, looking at reduction of, of a safe road to egresses, having anything out there. It's just, it just seems like it's getting away from us. Um, and this is, it's a lot of white rhinos, so to speak. Um, and, you know, for me, I feel comfortable having, we should have a plan in place. Either what you're talking about, these are the full costs, this is what's actually going to cost these thirteen, fourteen people. It's going to cost six digits because we know we're going to build a road, we're going to have water, we're going to have, uh, fire, fire services, we're going to have hydrants out there. So that these people know what they're getting. Or we have a plan saying, look, you're going to, you're on your own out there. And, um, these expectations are there, we should have interest. So we should have people to firmly commit to this. Because if we only sell two or three, that means we're stuck holding on to twelve of these.
Yeah, and I definitely understand your concern and, and all of those services are still up for debate. But I, I don't want to get, um, misconceptions put into the public rise that we're going to be selling five acre lots for $40,000. Yeah, I definitely understand the survey came back at that. But how many people answered the survey? You know, I don't think, we, surveys are good information, but you have to keep it relative to how many people respond. If we only had twenty percent responding to a survey, the $40,000 mark isn't the end-all be-all, right? Counselor Kirby? Sorry, Counselor Majinsky?
Once council shows that, once we buy this, that's going to generate interest right there. And you could have people coming forward saying, look, I want one of these and I want this. Go put down payments, who knows? We don't know yet. But we were missing this in our, our land that was available for people coming in. It's fourteen people. You can't tell me we can't sell fourteen, fourteen lots. You know, we've already said that we're going to go out and, and, and market Tumbler Ridge to people that are trying to move to locations like this. This is not, to me, a huge risk. I think, I think this is, um, this is a great addition to our, what we can offer for housing. I'm going to pay it.
Counselor Majinsky.
Um, I talked to Ms. Thompson today, and she said it's 11 lots. So every time this comes up, even the first time I ask, "How many acres is it?" We didn't know. We're basically, we didn't know. Now we finally know the number is 11 lots, not 14, not 12, but we can also say if we want to go forward with this, we don't have to develop all of them at once if we're going to be putting in electricity and sewer and fire hydrants and all that. But if you look in Dawson Creek, where I grew up and I'm very familiar with rural lots and subdivisions, we don't even need to put in a loop of a road. We can just have a large turnaround, and there's a lot of roads like that, especially up on Bear Mountain, that have zero services. It's have a power line in and everybody's on well service. All of rural, all of Dawson Creek is on well. So very easy for us to do, and guess what? None of those houses are empty. All, they sell. People want them, and if they can have that option here, they will sell. They might not sell right away, but we can also look at this as a phased approach. We can just put in the road partway. We don't have to do, you know, a kilometer long road. We could do 500 meters in past the saddle club or whatever, right? These are options, but I think a gravel road is what we want. We don't need a paved road with sidewalk and underground waterways and everything else, and somewhere to do a water collection system and a pump and go back to the, the water system, right? So this, I think we should just, even if we bought the land, or we want to, and we didn't get interest in the first couple of years leases, it's an investment.
Still an asset.
Land doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't devalue, so this is, I think it's a very good investment twice.
I agree. Any other comments, questions? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Second recommendation. Counselor Norbury.
The council directs administration to purchase 22.0 hectares, approximately 54 acres, each in portion of provincial crown property parcel chief plan 31307, 100 acre wood, $212,000, $13.90.
Seconder. Counselor Kirby. Discussion. Counselor Howe.
So on this, this map, the large one that was kind of, there's some stars on sections of the map that don't, in the legend, it doesn't tell you what those stars are. I would assume that the stars are potential development spots for residential lots, I would assume. Is, is, do we own any of this land? Do we have anywhere that we can expand in Tumbler Ridge?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I apologize, like, I don't know what the stars are. I do know that up on, off of Wolverine, or a piece, Wolverine, just off of Wolverine, we do own that, correct? Sorry, I'm just going to hand it to Mr. Powell. Sorry, thank you for your patience. So I'm, on the north side of Wolverine Avenue, we do own that parcel. Like from Murray Park North, as long as I'm looking at the map correct.
So is this, sorry, is this off green with the stars on it provincial crown land?
I don't, I don't know what the stars are and I don't.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Howe.
Yeah, so just looking for what, what land do we have then? If that is not what these signify, what land do we have that we own right now that if a developer came in to build a new portion in the community, that we could sell that portion? I know there's a portion down by the HD Housing across the road. We talked about that a couple of meetings ago. There's a portion there that potentially could be residential. I don't like that area for residential, but what other areas do we have around the community if we don't buy this land?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. That, I would have to bring a different map because this is the parks and recreation trails map, and I, we have a list. Mr. Powell feels that he can provide more detail.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So, yeah, I can tell you that we do own the portion of the, of the upper bench, the north end of Wolverine Avenue. We own that portion there. The, and I believe that we own none of the other starred areas on this map. The, the one on the right-hand side, the one with the yellow and the green star, that's , that's crowned. Yeah, all the others is crown land.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't we own the property on both sides of the Calco Road because we have for sale, seven of them?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. I will have Mr. Powell respond to that.
Mayor Council, no, that's all crown land. I had, we did have one of those portions appraised back in about 2018 or 2019 with a view to possibly purchasing that as one of the crown land options, but no, that's still crown land.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Howe.
I just, I just, like I say, I think we're limited in the amount of space that we have. We had tons and tons and tons of land around Tumbler Ridge. We sold it all back to the government when the mines closed down, so we had money to continue the town on, but we've kind of reached a point now that, you know, we need to have stuff available so that if somebody came in, that we can at least offer that to a developer. I do understand that there is TLA and TLE implications at some point, but those lands haven't been decided on yet either, and they may not be decided on for a long time. They may not be purchased. We don't, we don't know. So at this time, we don't really have any other options. We've got that one spot at the end of Wolverine, is the way I understand it right now, and we now will have a rural area, but I think that we likely should buy this. That's, that's my take on it. I think we've appraised it. We've looked at it. We've made our remarks to our First Nation partners that were interested in that land. We made the argument why we thought we needed it, and I think the time is now. We have to have pieces of land and, and, and do, go and do something.
I agree. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. The recommendation on the floor, as I also supported, that area was our property beforehand. It's a natural expansion of land for us in case we need it. I support that's getting back. We're going to be sold it.
Yep, thank you. Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 9.5 NDIT Grant Applications. Report dated May 17, 2021, from the Director of Economic Development and Tourism, to seek approval to apply for the NDIT Housing Needs Assessment Grant and the Capital Investment Analysis Grant, and acknowledge the work plan change of scope to remove C2 expansion. Recommendation, please? I'll move the first recommendation, that staff submit an application to the NDIT Housing Needs Assessment Grant for a match funding total of $13,500 to complete a comprehensive housing needs assessment. Seconder. Counselor Kerkalka. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Move that the second recommendation, that staff submit an application to the NDIT Capital Investment Analysis Grant for a match funding total of $6,437.50 to complete a feasibility study for rural residential development. Seconder. Counselor Lehman. Discussion. Counselor Howe.
Will this slow down our development of the Murray River overlook saddle club area?
I don't believe so. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Through council, no, it won't. With the housing needs that we are required to do by the province, this is a nice add-on so we can find out the housing needs information of the community and then a feasibility study that would say at this level of service, we can do this. It, it just augments it, and this will be started and completed in 21.
Thank you. Follow-up?
So my only concern on this is that the right information comes out of it, and the rural residential part that got lost in translation the last time that we did a survey in Tumbler Ridge was that we went out and asked the residents of Tumbler Ridge or whoever wanted to fill the survey out, which was a very poor response of how much land that they would like to purchase, basically, not giving them the information that we had, that we know that we wanted to make the lots five acres or greater, to stay away from having to provide sewer and water on those lots. We've been told in this council many times that if it is five acres or larger, we do not have to provide services to the lot. So when we do a, a study for feasibility study on rural residential, I want to make sure that that is taken into account because rural residential in Tumbler Ridge, we don't have any rural residential that is available except the part that we're looking at developing. There's hardly any. There's some farms, couple of farms out down the road there and a possibility of some up the hill via Quintet. Maybe they might turn into lots, but a feasibility study when we don't even have any lots for sale doesn't make a whole pile of sense to me.
Ms. Thompson, did you want to kind of explain this one a little bit, please?
Thank you. I will pass this to Director Powell to, to respond.
Thank you.
So Mayor Council, I just wanted to clarify that this, this analysis would be specifically looking at the three parcels we've been talking about this evening, so one being 100 acre wood, one being saddle club, the other one being the area at North End of Wolverine. Specifically looking at those lots and looking at the, a few scenarios, looking at the options. So, you know, some of the concerns that council has been talking about this evening with, to levels of services and so on, we would be looking at all of those and then saying, "Well, if we provide this, this, and this, this is how much each lot is likely to cost." So, you know, we want to expedite to, to your question, Counselor Howe, is, you know, we want to expedite the process, having this information readily to hand, to speed up.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. You know, I support the recommendation on the floor, and I think it's important to make sure that when we are asking these questions, that we are asking unbiased, unloaded questions. I mean, I understand, Counselor Howe. We want answers to a question. At the same point in time, we can, we can affect the results by asking a loaded question, so to speak, right? I think in, in moving forward, we should always be looking at four balanced, fair questions. Make sure they're unloaded. We do want the answers. Same point in time, we want to have.
Yep. No, and I think this feasibility study is going to provide a lot of information for council that we've been wondering about, so I, I definitely am supportive of it. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. I'll move the third recommendation, that council approve an amendment to this residential development strategic priority to remove the C2 component. Seconder. Counselor Majinsky. Discussion. Counselor Howe.
I'd like to get a little more information on what removing the C2 component is. Is that removing the potential of a new commercial park on the opposite side of the road of McKenzie where the original commercial park is?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand.
One second, one second. Okay. Sorry, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Through council, I'll have Director Powell respond to that.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, yes, the commercial area that I was referring to when I originally proposed this budget line was the area across from the existing commercial park on McKenzie Way, so that's the major area to the immediate south of the Trenton.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up, Counselor?
Yeah. Sorry, we don't have a lot of commercial lots available right now. I mean, to me, this is a pressing issue. It is something that we need to start getting the handle on. Is this something that we'd be looking at to complete and execute?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. You are correct. It is something that we would look at completing in 22. With staff capacity and budget constraints, we couldn't fit everything in to the budget that we had proposed earlier for capital and special.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? I believe that was just an emergency. It wasn't a conflict, I believe. Yeah, okay. Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 9.6 Adoption of New Digital Marketing Strategy. Report dated May 17, 2021, from the Director of Economic Development and Tourism regarding the adoption of the new digital marketing strategy created by Tumbler Ridge and its partners. Recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury.
The council adopted a new Tumbler Ridge digital marketing strategy as presented, and the council approved the limited use of the new visit Tumbler Ridge.
Seconder. Counselor Kirby. Discussion. Counselor Norbury.
Mayor Bertrand, thinking of staffing was great. I'm glad we were able to utilize our on-staff digital advantage. I really do like how we are sort of creating our own brand by utilizing elements of an already successful brand. You're looking at the proposals for the digital side of things. I like what they're doing. You know, from my, my neck of the woods, we're finding that almost half of all people's first touch of a, of an area, right? So the first time they check out Tumbler Ridge, it's going to be digital, right? So half the people that are going to come here, that's where they're first going to go. So I think it's, it's, I think it's great that we are setting ourselves up to be that source. We have the capacity. I did have one question, well, maybe a couple of questions for staff. In, in the particulars, we're talking about promoting what we're doing in the community, which I think is, is integral, using the Canada calendar. Are we going to be having connection, collaboration, whatever you want to call it, communication from community center and our user groups to showcase what they're doing as well? Because it'd be great to have that connection from the outside world website flow through into everybody. I know it's a big ask, but, question?
Okay. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I will actually have Mr. Powell or his staff respond to that one. Powell?
Sorry, Mr. Powell.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Council. So in response to your question, are we going to be collaborating with the community center and some of the features there? Is that, is that a way?
And, and you, yeah, of course, on a.
So with regards to the community center, not so much, simply because of the target audience. You've got to, you've got to think that, you know, the people who are going to be looking at the social media page or the digital marketing campaign to people outside of the community. You know, certainly, once they are looking at our community, they can then access a lot of the information from the community center. Going on to the user groups, absolutely, we're going to be partnering, we're already partnering with several, one being the mountain bike association, the other one being the Steveds, but, you know, as far as the hotels are concerned, the restaurants, as far as, you know, all of the other various user groups around the community, absolutely, we are, you know, designed so that we can be partnering with the local.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. As a follow-up, thank you, Mr. Powell. That's a really good point, I think. My thoughts would be like those big one-offs that are good for everybody, you know, like the ATV, excuse me, the Snowmobiles Drag Races, right? Like, that's a good example of something that anybody looking at our community might want to come check out. Thank you for that, Tony.
I'd like to call a 10-minute recess. Counselor Kerkalka got called away on an emergency here, and he will be back shortly, so 10-minute recess, please.
Definitely get some timing in your camp, remember?
That thing looks like, that thing looks amazing.
Yeah, pretty good. We're going to be out every weekend, long weekends.
Oh, yeah, once you get something here.
Wait. Call back to order. So recommendation on 9.6 is on the floor and seconded, we're just in discussion at the moment. Oh, Ms. Thompson? Yes. No problem. Oh, I didn't even pay attention. What time is it? 6:40?
Yeah, you called the recess at 6:30.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think I can call back to order. Oh, not yet. One more. No worries. Rush. Okay. Call back to order. We are on 9.6. The recommendation, full recommendations on the floor and seconded, we're just in discussion. Councilor Kerkalka?
So thank you for the recess, which is a whole time, a whole time. Came up. I'd like to see us split the two recommendations, one on the square and one on the audience board up. Just from staff, I believe we, somebody asked for them to split it up, they can be.
After it's been moved? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So the motion's already been moved and seconded, so it would have to be debated and then split.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor.
And that's fine. It can stay the same way it is. Be voting opposed. I have no issue, and maybe I'll change my mind on regards to the debate and the hearing from staff. I have no issue with the first part of the motion regards to digital marketing strategy. The issue I have is with the new logo. To me, we have a pot of soup on the stove, and now we're starting to add to it. So my concern there is, when the museum was here, it was only thing that was in Tumbler Ridge, everything was museum, museum, museum. Now all of a sudden, got a new baby, and it's called the GeoPark. The new baby seems to have everything thrown into it, they have all the rebranding, and I understand the report, we're not changing those signs and everything else. But are we not mixing up, when people start coming to town, so they look up our Visit Tumbler Ridge, new webpage, or Facebook page, they come here, and their first thought to make is our visitor center, and the first thing they get is the GeoPark, welcome to Tumbler Ridge GeoPark. So is all the studying I've done is actually the same stuff in that book? Or not the same at all? Now maybe looking for the visitor Tumbler Ridge, visitable. That is my concern, is we're starting to make some blended. I was in to talk to Ms. Thompson, my understanding is the new book that we just printed this year is for two years. So that's my concern when we talk about changing, we're adding another logo to the Visit Tumbler Ridge. Then with the GeoPark, Visit Tumbler Ridge, Global GeoPark, that seemed to be the big push. And now we seem to be saying, oh, excuse me, we seem to have done, now it should always been separate? And I'm just wondering if we're too late, but also too early? Should it just be something that we look at in a year when the books come up, and start back from scratch? Or blend the whole soup up? That'd be my take on that.
I definitely understand your concern, and I'm not sure if this new logo is to be incorporated within the books. I believe it's just an online presence. Maybe, Ms. Thompson, if we could have Mr. Powell or Ms. Olson explain a little bit more on the rationale around this, because the way I read it, and it kind of makes sense to me that we're starting to intermix between the two organizations, having the one branding. And on an online presence, it isn't very clear whether or not you're, you know, reading or getting provided information from the district or from the Global GeoPark. So I do see this being an advantage on an online presence, just to differentiate between the two organizations. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Yeah, I mean, kind of went into my spiel before, after Councilor Kerkalka left, but I mean, you know, sorry to bore the rest of you, but I'll go into it a little bit myself. And I think it's, for me, it's that, like, the logo, because it gives that differentiation, between the GeoPark and Tumbler Ridge, right? We want to be the source. The GeoPark is a feature of Tumbler Ridge, but Tumbler Ridge is the destination. We want people to be coming to us because of that confusion. I think it's better to start now. There will be some confusion. It's better to start now versus two years from now. Let's pull the bandit off, let's just move around.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson? A little, just a little bit of background and clarification, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I will pass this to Director Powell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, and Mayor Council. So Mayor Bertrand, Mayor Bertrand and Councilor Norbury, you're both correct in what you were just saying just now. So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, yes, when you are looking at two websites, side by side, and this is something which was flagged throughout this process, when you're looking at the two websites, the Visit Tumbler Ridge website, which is a district maintained site, and the GeoPark website, they both look like official GeoPark. Both using the same GeoPark logo. So right now, we want to differentiate, and we make sure that we are communicating to the outside world, because remember, you know, we're catering to people outside of this community, not to people within the community. We are communicating to them which site they're looking at. It's so to avoid that confusion. So this is why we're wanting to put them apart. Now, the GeoPark is mainly focusing on GeoPark related issues, the education, the, you know, all of the other scientific and the paleontological research. We are catering to the tourist. So that's really why we've got to separate and make sure that it's to the outside world.
Please, please.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. So like Director Powell said, it's the differentiation is the kind of main reason why we're doing this. This logo won't be on anything else, except for the header and website, and the profile pictures of the social media pages, Instagram, which will be new, and the Facebook page. So the Facebook already exists, and it's called Visit Tumbler Ridge right now, but it has a GeoPark logo. So we basically have two social media accounts that look really similar right now, and really are kind of putting out the same content. So the plan with this new digital marketing strategy would be that the Visit Tumbler Ridge pages would be more the marketing vehicle, the plan your trip, come here, that kind of stuff. And there will still be sharing amongst the GeoPark pages and the Visit Tumbler Ridge pages, but it's just the confusion of, you know, a digital marketing expert looked at this, and was definitely confused at what we had going on.
Thank you very much. Councilor Kerkalka?
Just got to call. So who owns the Global GeoPark brand?
Ms. Thompson?
So the logo that I see right now, it says Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark. Who owns it?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. I will pass that to Director Powell again.
Thank you.
I'll just have Director Powell answer these questions for you. I wasn't here when this all started, and he's aware of most of it, so if you're all right, but that'll just happen, we're still on.
Certainly. Thank you.
Mayor Council, so yes, the district paid for the whole process of developing the branding back in 2015, 16, 17. So we own it along with the GeoPark, so we have mutual open use of the logo.
Follow-up?
So the reason I asked that to staff is, when we had the sledding competition that came to town, my big concern there, and it was through to Ms. Thompson, is that was done by the district as well. The district paid for it all, the district, I'm not sure the total amount, I have no idea, ballpark, I think you guys did fabulous job, so I'm not beating you down with a great job on doing that. But we weren't advertising until I came in and talked to Ms. Thompson. The district of Tumbler Ridge was actually missed on a lot of their advertising. So that's where my confusion gets to in regards to another logo. And my understanding, we're going through staff reports for doing draws and giveaways and all that? So again, is it going to get confusing? Are we going to be listing the Global GeoPark and all of our giveaways and draws and all that as well?
Ms. Thompson?
Mayor Council, so the only time we're using the Tumbler Ridge logo that you've seen in this report, the Visit Tumbler Ridge logo, is on the website and social media pages. We wouldn't be using it for any other purposes. So, you know, the videos that we have produced, or having produced, or the sledding videos that the filming that was done a couple of months ago, that's all going to have the Global GeoPark and the TR logo on it. It won't have this.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up?
So again, I don't want to direct to, no disrespect to Mr. Powell, but again, I won't directly to him. My question is, through the report, it states about doing draws and giveaways through this thing. Is it only being advertised as Visit Tumbler Ridge draw through the District of Tumbler Ridge? Or are we adding the Global GeoPark on there as well?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. Just one minute, here.
Sorry. So yes, it will be on the Visit Tumbler Ridge page, but it will still have the Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark logos on the events as well.
So again, this is about, Council, again, the community, it seems like we're going to get mixed in there. And the logo grade looks great, so don't take me wrong, I'm beating that up. Are we going to confuse again? Like, we're saying we're trying to do this to do the separation. So we're going to add this to a Facebook page, and websites, and all that, and every time that the district decides to do draws, it'll go over again, Global GeoPark. So again, when I go and start searching things, am I going to search Visit Tumbler Ridge? Or am I going to search Global GeoPark? And right now, we're not changing the magazine, or it's not going to go on any print. But I'm thinking a year and a half down the road, and we go to do new magazines, because nowhere on the new one doesn't say Visit Tumbler Ridge. It says Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark on our visitor's. So is that the plan, to change that as well when the new print goes out?
No. No, this is only online. Councilor Majewski?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So this new digital marketing strategy, did that come through from staff, or was that from a grant that was provided by B.C. Tourism, and they came up with this recommendation?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So there was a grant through B.C. Tourism, and a consultant was hired, and the district put in a portion of funds. So it was a digital marketing expert that was hired through a grant we received through B.C. Tourism.
Thank you. Councilor, follow-up?
And from what I understand, we are confused by all of our websites and where to search when they're, come to Tumbler Ridge to visit, see what's going on here. I just typed in Visit Terrace. It goes right to their commodity visitor information center. It doesn't go to their district page. Soon as you click on it, on the visitor information center there, it goes to their town site of Terrace, like Visit Terrace, which has their Visit Terrace logo. So for us to add in one more Visit Tumbler Ridge logo, which I do not agree with, I think it convolutes everything, it adds more to it, we have our Visit Tumbler Ridge logo, which has been here since day one. It's iconic. That's our professional look. If you want to come here to visit as a tourist or explore, you think of it as a GeoPark. Yes, there has to be a differentiation there, but right now, the Visit Tumbler Ridge page is maintained by the district, the GeoPark is maintained by the visitor information center. What I would suggest we do is either have one website to, because whenever you type in something, there's multiple things that come in. We see the museum, we see, even new right now, even the biking stuff pops up, we got the Facebook page, we got all these pages coming up. It'd be a lot easier if we have, if we typed into the search engine online, District of Tumbler Ridge website popped up first, and at the top of it, have all the different headers. So we would have Tumbler Ridge logo, Invest Tumbler Ridge logo, so you can click on each one, and it'll tell you, okay, we can invest here, you have opportunities to start a business or whatever. Then you have your GeoPark, and then... And then under that, you could have all of the different things. So we'd have the museum, the visitor information center. And then from there, it can go into all of the activities that are in the area instead of having a Visit Tumbler Ridge. And then it might not have all of the information we need. Right now, we can click on one website, it might not have it. We're not looking for it, so then they get confused. So they said, okay, well, maybe Tumbler Ridge doesn't have that, but I heard it did. Like they heard about the trackways, but it's not on that. But you have a museum site. Then they got a, they got three different webpages open. Then they're like, okay, which one was it at, the SoMap? What are the hours of operation? And then where do I get a lantern tour? And it gets way too confusing. And I think if it was under one website, it'd be a heck of a lot easier. Same with all of the online marketing. Continue what we've been doing with the Global GeoPark and just put on there, visit. Why doesn't it not just have that same logo, but add in visit? Or that's part of the application when you type in something, right? So it just seems like we're adding one more thing that's not needed.
Yeah, I see your point there. Ms. Thompson, is there a possibility of conglomerating everything?
Sorry, Counsel Kirby's had her hand open and you missed her twice now, so I was just.
That's all right. It's getting, it's pretty easy to get used to this.
Sorry.
Apologies.
Again, yes, taken.
Sorry. So I do, I do understand what Counselor Majinsky's saying. However, at this time, we're trying to work within what we currently have. Our, our capacity and our budgets are set for this year. And in order to take this and put it all into one, it's, it's a very large project. And it wouldn't be something that we could do quickly or easily. And it, it's like a, it's a very in-depth process that we'd have to take on and it, and it wouldn't be solved before the tourist season this year. It would be something we'd have to carry forward.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kirby.
No, thanks. Thank you.
Counselor Majinsky.
I, I don't see the need to add anything. So I think what we have right now works. Stick with it, don't change it. Just continue on with the social media as it is. With the logos we have.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. You know, Counselor Majinsky, I think you pair us to, pair us? They don't have a GeoPark. So that's not, that's not quite great, a great comparison because they don't have that sort of internet traffic stream, right? When we're looking at how people browse the internet, want as many streams as possible coming into Tumbler Ridge, right? The Visit Tumbler Ridge, somebody wants to come to Tumbler Ridge, we want them to see Visit Tumbler Ridge.
If they're coming, they're looking for.
GeoParks, they're going to find the GeoPark website. But I think it's important for us to have our own identity and not be the GeoPark. The GeoPark is a facet of our community, but we are our own, we're going to, we have our own things we want to promote, which is why it's important to have this Visit Tumbler Ridge. And it's good to have that differentiation that people know. Visit Tumbler Ridge. The GeoPark's there, Visit Tumbler Ridge, number one.
Thank you. Counselor Nor, uh, sorry, Kukalka.
Oh wait, I know Counsel Kirby had a hand over there. So I did, I was going to be in line.
You were. That's why I'm calling on you.
So, so I understand what Counselor Norbury's thought, but I totally agree with Counselor Majinsky though. Again, I'm not in support of another logo. I think it mixes the soup. What? But the other concern I have is within the staff report. Okay, not a concern, so I don't want that to take about. But it's our, our website. And Mr. Powell's already spoken about it, staff's already spoken about that. We spent a ton of money doing our webpage, and it wasn't that long ago. Talking with Ms. Thompson, it, it's huge, but there's some big issues with it. And that's concerning, and I guess for Ms. Thompson, I'm not trying to put her on the spot. How often should we be redoing our videos? Is it yearly, every three years, every five-year process? Just because I see in the, in the comments from staff is this could be something that B C staff will be bringing back for 2022 capital budget. And I can't remember the price tag last time, but I know it wasn't cheap.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through Counsel. So I am not sure what the, what the cost was to upgrade the website. Thank you. Ms. Torville responded, responded it was $20,000. So we did give it a refresh, but from my understanding, it's the, the mechanics behind it that is not, it's been updated. You know, there's better programs out there and that ours is very hard to update. So we haven't looked into the cost of updating the, the engine behind it that keeps the webpage up right now. But it is something that is, I've, I've heard from a few members of staff already that it's, it's not easy to update and, and put everything together on it. So it is on our radar to bring back to Counsel. It would be a special project for 22.
And in your opinion, would five years be an adequate timeline?
Sorry, depending on, depending on technology and everything, I know in, throughout the years, we always have updated every five years. And we've always gone with a different, like a new web build because there's always your pages and that are created underneath a certain program. And those programs go outdated and they need to be updated. So I know we did ours every five.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Thank you for getting frustrated. I'm, I'm sorry for getting frustrated. It, it is frustrating when you have a comment that is in the loop. Then you get to add it 10 minutes after the conversation is done. I think that the key to this marketing strategy is to make ourselves current. And being on Facebook and Instagram is something that we are, we need to get in on. And this icon is basically just that, an icon that, you know, will be our icon for Instagram and Facebook, nothing else. Really, it's, it's quite a small, it plays a really small role in this whole strategy, really. And, 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 you know, getting ourselves on Instagram and looking at the presentation, which is available if they want to look at it, to make it clearer is how this will work, how this will help the travel trip plan. And so it really doesn't have anything to do with the GeoPark as that because it has different roles that it will play to, to the tourists. So we were, like, for Counsel, our marketing strategy is to get the travelers here, make it easy for them, get the information quicker. And this is just kind of overarching what we have and, and creating something simpler for the online presence. And that's what will keep people in town those two to three days that will benefit our businesses, that will benefit, you know, everyone in the tourism industry, et cetera. So, you know, I think we're, this logo really isn't as concerning as I think Counsel's making it to be.
Counselor Majinsky.
I think it is concerning because it's adding more confusion. What's wrong with the current one that we're using? That is our marketing right now. We use that on everything. There shouldn't be any else. When I use Terrace as an example, you type in visit whatever, whatever community in B C, it'll go to their visitor information center first. But then when we click on our visitor information center, it goes to our Global GeoPark website instead of our District of website, like District of Terrace. It goes directly to their website. That's why I think everything should go back to our District of Tumbler Ridge website, where you have the subheaders, Global GeoPark, Invest Tumbler Ridge, Museum, et cetera.
But that conglomeration is really going to take a lot of effort to revamp.
Instead of coming up with a new idea off the hop to appease the tourism, tourists of this year.
But don't you think, you know, I think of the brand, Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark. When I see that brand on any type of marketing online, I don't know if it's coming from the district or the Global GeoPark. That's where the confusion is coming in, Counsel.
But it's one of the same. We own it. So there shouldn't be any confusion because it says Tumbler Ridge, it's ours.
But there's different mandates between the two organizations.
That doesn't matter. They're coming here, they don't care about the mandates when they're coming to visit. They're coming here to explore. They're wanting to see the trackways, they're wanting to see the backcountry.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter what the mandates are or what the objective of the museum is or the visitor information center or anybody else or any other A T V club or snowmobile association, and that doesn't matter. They're here to explore what we have to offer. As long as we can get all that information across, whether it's the waterfalls, hiking trails, the backcountry, what you can do, what's new and happening in the area, then that's what they're here to see. And as long as they can find that information quickly and efficiently without going through three different websites to find it, that's the way to do it. So one consolidated website, and that could happen in two, three years. What's working right now is working.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think consolidation would be an easier way to go, most definitely. But like I say, it's going to take a complete revamp of the website to do that. Counselor Powell.
So I was really on the fence when I read this and I didn't really know which way to go. And I wanted to hear the debate tonight, see if any Counselor could change my mind. But the way I look at it is, Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark is not the District of Tumbler Ridge. The District of Tumbler Ridge has the District of Tumbler Ridge logo. This is our professional logo that we have when somebody wants to come do business in Tumbler Ridge and deal with town hall. We're talking specifically about a visit, or sorry, a tourism aspect that is ran by our Economic Development Department, not the Global GeoPark. So I can see the confusion for, they want to put a post out that's just our own staff. They want to come up with their own thought or their own idea that may not have anything to do with the GeoPark. But right now, their logo is a GeoPark logo in the top corner. So they should have their own designation. And I, right from the very beginning, I never liked the whole thing where we were, the Tumbler, anytime the Tumbler Ridge logo was out there, the GeoPark logo has to be there. And that was on everything we were doing, they had to be together. That's my only concern with adding this logo. But from what I have heard, this is only going to be used for our online presence to differentiate from them. And to me, if, if I was running the GeoPark, I would actually be upset if the Tumblr, District of Tumbler Ridge was constantly using our logo to represent themselves. That, that's not who we are. And I, I think we should have a designation. They are at arms length for it. We are not the Global GeoPark. We don't own it. We, we fund a portion of it, but they have their own mandate, they do their own things. I may not agree with everything that the Global GeoPark does. The electors of Tumbler Ridge may not agree with everything. We have no control on that side of what they do over there. But we most certainly do on what our staff does from this aspect here. And to me, I understand that there could be some confusion around it. To tell you the truth, I didn't even know we had a Visit Tumbler Ridge website. I didn't realize that there was three different websites. The Tumbler Ridge Museum Foundation has their own website. The Global GeoPark has their own. The District of Tumbler Ridge has their own. So therefore, if, if our Visit Tumbler Ridge website has its own, it should have its own logo so that we can go and post and put whatever we want on there. And if the GeoPark doesn't agree with it, well, tough luck because it has nothing to do with them, so we're not using their logo. So I think that the logo should, should be changed to the one that's there. I just have the concern that we paid so much money and so many consultants and we wasted so much time in here about getting these logos and branding and all these things had to look the same. And then we get to that point and then there is some confusion on this. I don't look at that as the same thing, but I don't want to see this logo start to take off everywhere around the community. If, if it sticks to the online presence, it makes total sense to me to be the icon on a Facebook page or Insta face or whatever the hell they're using out there nowadays.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kukalka and Norbury.
Yeah, thank you. So just about the staff, so they, I think Counsel Powell makes me, you know, maybe changes a bit of it. But why if on doing this, Visit Tumbler Ridge, social media and all that, when we're going to do a draw or we will do a giveaway on this page, why would we have to put the Global GeoPark? Staff said they would be putting that on the giveaway, but why? If it's our own page, our own concept, why would we add Global GeoPark to one of our giveaways through this website?
Because that's the logo right now.
Ms. Thompson.
Nobody, we changed it to be at Tumbler Ridge.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Just one moment. I'll have Ms. Olson and Mr. Powell respond.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Counsel. So the reason that we would still keep the GeoPark logo on the giveaways and everything is that from an outsider, we still want the GeoPark logo to be the brand of Tumbler Ridge. Visit Tumbler Ridge isn't going to take over as the brand. It's simply going to be our online vehicle. So I guess something that I think does need to probably be discussed further is the logo usage. And, you know, it does get confusing even for me when it comes to some of these projects, what I should be putting the T R municipal logo on, what I should be putting the GeoPark logo on. So I guess, I think the whole point of, you know, the rebranding was that the GeoPark logo was supposed to be our whole tourism brand. The GeoPark organization has its own mandate. And that's where things get a little confusing.
Confusing.
I don't know if that answered your question very well, but.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up?
I guess just back to, so we do a draw. Are you, staff plans on launching this page, going to do a, Visit, Visit Tumbler Ridge page, going to do a staycation? Why if you were doing it, so if staff, so Ms. Thompson, staff is doing it, spending all this time organizing hotels, the food, maybe some excursions, why would we advertise the Global GeoPark on that? When to me, it is your staff that has spent the time to not only make this logo, but do all the extra legwork. Why would we put the Global GeoPark on that advertising of? They are doing the gift work. They are doing it. The district's doing it, not the Global GeoPark.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, through Counsel. So I do understand, you know, the, the angle that you're coming at. But, you know, from the project that was done a couple of years ago, it was that this is the branding of the district with the Global GeoPark. And as Mr. Powell and, and Ms. Olson have lived to try and work through this, there is, you know, that mandate of this is the Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark. So that is the branding of the district. And that's where, at the time, in 2015, 2016, it was like, yes, this is, this is what it is. So now there is some confusion on it, that the district is still the Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark. And when you look at the GeoPark, it's UNESCO Global GeoPark. So there, it's the same but different because the Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark is the district. So I do understand what you're saying, like you want, you're wondering why we don't use the District of Tumbler Ridge logo and it's the GeoPark, right? It's because that project, when it was done a few years ago, was that this was our branding and to take the, the T R logo out of it and use that. So I do understand what you're saying. It would be something I'm sure that we staff can have a discussion on to make sure that our T R logo does, does show up with the Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark as well because that's what that whole brand was created with. You know, there is a possibility that we can include the Tumbler Ridge logo, but it would be something that I would like to sit down with staff and, and brainstorm and, and find out how we can manage both logos for the branding to ensure that the district is recognized as the financial supporter and the one that is doing a lot of the, the legwork and, and the work for this.
Thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for that explanation. The only thing I'd like to add is, we may have our own realms of understanding and knowledge of, of the internet, web-based traffic, all that. You know, we did have a digital market consultant, you know, consultant and expert in the field. They, they brought this up to us. But it is important to, to realize that our knowledge gets to a point and an expert knowledge takes over at another point. And I think we should be keeping our advice very strong.
Thank you. Counselor Kukalka.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So just, just clearly, this is the last question. So with the new logo that's passed tonight, and if staff decides to do a draw, staycation, Riverboat Tribe, whatever, whatever staff decides to use their budget, why would we advertise the Global GeoPark on there when it's the Visit Tumbler Ridge logo that you're asking us to approve today? That's all I'm asking.
Ms. Thompson, I think that question's been asked twice now. Is there anything new you can add to it?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I will, I'll see if Mr. Powell has more insight. Mr. Powell?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, Mayor Counsel. So, yeah, I'm not sure if I can really add anything additional to the conversation. But what I hope that, you know, the takeaway from this meeting is that from an outsider's perspective, whether they come from Port St. John, Vancouver, wherever it is, they, they're looking for an experience and they want to come to Tumbler Ridge for an experience. They don't care, you know, about the District of Tumbler Ridge or the, or the, you know, the T R logos. They are coming, the big draw is the GeoPark. So if we're going to really communicate and reach out to our target audiences, we've really got to be promoting the feature, the attraction of the community, which, whether you like it or not, is the GeoPark. So that's, so yes, putting the Global GeoPark logo on a lot of the, the draws and a lot of the publicity that we do, absolutely. And, you know, the work that we do and the work my department's done for the last five years since we rolled out the new, new branding and the new visitor guides and everything. From a, from a visitor's perspective, they shouldn't be able to see the scene between what the district does and the GeoPark does and the museum does. and the museum does. It's one entity and we are working, I hope, as a team to, to get this done.
Okay, thank you. Um, did I miss anybody? Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. 9.7, summer fun area, report dated May 17th, 2021, from the Recreation Services Manager regarding council ideas for converting the curling rink into a summer fun area. Recommendation, please? Counselor Howell? Seconder? Counselor Kirby? All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Schedule of meetings? Any issues there, counsel? Thompson? Counselor Norbury?
Do you have one? I'm a little early. We don't have a meeting until seven. But this is getting around the time we were going to talk about a let's talk again. And if, um, still the idea out there, I mean, we're still have code protocols going on. Right here more than we, who knows? But I think we should be in our minds thinking, let's give some feedback tomorrow evening.
Absolutely, um, this, I have been struggling with this because I do feel that, um, an online let's talk is warranted at this point. But, um, I think you're right. I think a lot could change next week or, or the week after there. So, um, I know counsel is definitely committed on an in-person let's talk, but I think we certainly need to wait for recommendations. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Yeah, I think that's it. I mean, we could, we could get creative. We can go into the high school field. You know, have people spread out, have a bunch of, um, mics they can yell at us. I just think, um, something we should be thinking about, we shouldn't be forcing it. We don't want to put people at risk. We don't want to put ourselves in conflict with, uh, regulatory bodies. Let's just keep it in our.
Absolutely. No, it certainly hasn't left my train of thought. Thank you. Any other comments about schedule of meetings? Notice of motions? Any notice of motions tonight? Counselor Kerkalka?
The District of Tumblr Ridge assists the Tumblr Ridge Museum Foundation with parking lot cleaning and maintenance by street sweeping, painting parking stalls and annually required crack ceiling and snow removal of the parking.
Good, thank you. Counselors' business? Any counselors' business tonight? Counselor Howell?
Yes, something from, uh, with counselor's business that I'd like to discuss, uh, in council and I couldn't find a better time to bring it up, so I'm going to do it now, is, uh, I'm looking for an update from Canuma Coal. Uh, I would like for our council to send a letter to Canuma Coal to ask them to appear in front of us as a delegation to give us an update to what's going on in the community. I have been hearing some things that are concerning to me about Canuma Coal. And we haven't had them in here in a while, so I'd like to get them to come in and just give us an update of what's going on at the Wolverine. Are they actually going into the Herman? We, we spent a lot of time in this council to formulate letters to send in to support their operations in the Herman Mountain, to hear nothing back besides the fact that they're not going in there right now. And what is the plan for them with this Caribou stuff that's coming down the road? Is there any other things that we need to be concerned about? I've also heard rumor of a coal haul that's going to happen in our community, uh, that's going to go right down the highway, uh, past all of our tourist attractions, uh, that we have no idea about. When these types of things are coming down the pipe, for some reason, we're not hearing anything from them. If we're going to do any planning in our community for what we're doing with residential lots and rural lots and expanding the community, we should have some inclination of our largest employer in town, what they're doing, what is their plan? Haven't heard them from them in a while and I'd love to see them come sit down and appear as a delegation and, and see what the plan is for all of their mind sights and employment. And if, is there anything else that we can do to help them? Are they having problems getting, uh, people here or, or rentals or houses to buy or anything along those sides? So to me, I think it's well overdue that we get an update from them. If they're not willing to come in, we should send the invite to them.
Yeah, no, it's good idea, good suggestion. I think it's, um, definitely time to connect with them for sure. Any other counselors' business? Counselor Kerkalka?
Thank you, Worship. So with that, we, I've talked to staff and my apologies, but, uh, maybe I missed this part. But to me, I, I don't know, I know I talked to Ms. Thompson. They've added in here under Counsel Business in regards to the recommendations that came under the Help, uh, Mayor's Help Task Force. I'm not sure if we should do it as a notice of motion or debate them tonight.
I'm sure our council wants to.
Like they've been in our agenda. So the problem was, so I guess even from, 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 uh, Counsel Lehman, being sitting on that committee, is when we have recommendations, obviously we can't, but in the committee, we have to bring them back to council. We're fine. But how, how do we bring them back? The, the notice of motions are like this, because to me, we have staff that take our minutes. Um, we don't bring motions or we didn't bring these motions forward until the minutes were approved with the recommendation being read by the committee, making sure we agreed with it. And I don't want to talk to staff, they're like, oh, you should do it as a notice of motion. I was like, well, yeah, but it's kind of a driven council committee. So. That's why we did this, that's why I asked for it this way. So staff did do it on their own. I said, well, maybe it should be this way, but I don't want to be wrong.
Yeah, no, that's, that's perfectly okay in my eyes. I mean, uh, you, you have the report of the meeting, um, plus the recommendations in the minutes of the report. So there's background information for those recommendations. And I just wanted to get through the rest of counselors' business before we dealt with those recommendations. Ms. Thompson, do you see a problem in that process? Okay, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. I think that's completely relevant. Same with all of the committees, like, uh, Building Health Committee when there's recommendations, most definitely. Is there any other counselors' business tonight? I've got a bunch here. Um, so we recently had NCLGA, um, and during that time, we had opportunity to meet with Northern Health twice. Uh, the first meeting was with the Board Chair and President and CEO. And I thought that was, um, went very well. Um, one concern I had was the percentage of, um, eligible population of vaccinations. I believe their numbers are skewed because they use total population and not eligible population. So they informed us that it was 41% of the eligible population, but they also used, uh, 2016, I believe, census report of 2,100 population. So, uh, I believe that includes people under the age of 18. So I think those numbers are skewed a little bit. So Dr. Helm, um, quickly did some numbers himself and he was in the 60% range of eligible, 18 and up. Um, we also talked about attraction and retention. Um, and they also mentioned that our staff at the medical center will be receiving their second dose of the vaccine on May 20th. And this, they also said this was an opportunity of on May 20th, if anyone didn't get their first shot and they would like to, that this is an opportunity to form Northern Health and they, if there's enough people to warrant a clinic, they will set one up here in town. Um, and then the second meeting with Northern Health was a regional one with, uh, our new regional manager, Melanie Merkel, uh, as well as our Chief of Staff, Dr. Helm and Angela DeSmith, uh, from Northern Health. Um, they talked about some staffing issues, um, as well as agency issues as usual. Um, there will be a slight, um, interruption in the lab tech person, I believe, um, for about three days. Um, it was longer, but they were able to find a, an agency, uh, person to fill most of it. Uh, they were also talking about an occupational therapist going to be setting up in the region to service both Chetwin and Tumblr Ridge, as well as a physiotherapist, um, is going to be setting up in the Chetwin area and hopefully will be able to service the region as well. Um, and then I also had a PRD meeting. And I had a very disappointing meeting with the South Peace Snowmobile Advisory Committee as part of the partnership agreement to the Caribou Recovery. So a little bit of background, the Snowmobile Advisory Committee put in, uh, close to 500 hours into creating a report for the provincial government, but it went to all four parties, um, as part of the partnership agreement. Within that, uh, recommendation and committee, there was all the snowmobile clubs in the region involved, as well as the BC Snowmobile Federation and myself and, um, two other local government people. Um, a lot of time, a lot of effort, um, a lot of detail was put into that plan and the snowmobilers really stood by it. And over the last three months, that plan has gone to the parties to come up with a draft management strategy for snowmobiling. And the, um, the strategy basically doubles, if not triples, the amount of area closures that we recommended, as well as didn't include any of the slight modifications that would, um, allow snowmobilers in the area to access areas that are still open. Um, one of the, the numbers that they were using was 1,400 meter elevation. Um, so that was the point of high, high altitude habitat that they were trying to protect. Um, but basically the three-hour meeting, uh, last Thursday night was very disappointing. Um, all of the snowmobile clubs were completely disgusted and, uh, completely lost trust in the government again. Um, so I set up a, a phone call with the Assistant Deputy Mister David Muter, who was in charge, uh, the day after on Friday, and we had a, a good conversation. And I, I basically explained to him that unfortunately, the way it was presented to the committee, it was, it didn't seem possible for any altercations or any changes to that strategy. And he felt that there was possibility for changes. Um, so we're, he has called another meeting, uh, with the Snowmobile Committee, uh, tomorrow evening. And hopefully we can make some changes here because if we, if this strategy does not get the support of the Snowmobile Committee that they've set up, there is no possible way that we'll be able to engage the public and, and find support for it as well. So changes and amendments need to be made here and, and I'm going to fight very hard for it to happen. Um, yeah, that's about it. That's about all I can say on that. Um, Counselor Kerkalka, recommendation?
Thank you, Worship. First I got is the District of Tumblr Ridge Council set a budget amount for site visits by potential healthcare professionals.
Seconder? Counselor Lehman? Discussion? Counselor Kerkalka?
Yeah, so I know last year, um, we did have a, a, a budget amount with that committee. It was done through our CAO and through Dr. Helm. There was communication back and forth with them to help out, uh, bringing doctors here or. We changed it to healthcare professionals instead of just doctors, because there is nurses that potentially may come here. Um, in discussion with Northern Health, it sounds like they will help. There, there is some movement from their side to help bring some of these potential nurses in and stuff like that. But I think, you know, that's one of our priorities and I think we should have some funds there to assist with that. It can make a big difference in getting those people to come check out our community, what we have to offer. Maybe not the big shopping centers, but we have a beautiful, uh, mountains and rivers and creeks and all that. I think it's, it's important that we.
Good, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. You know, I support the recommendation, the floor, I support both. In that I think it is important that when we're looking at, um, we want to get long-term people to stay here, right? And they need to know what they're getting into. Um, we do a great job on our website, we just talked about that. I think it is a benefit to our community to actually showcase what we have. A lot of people that stay here for the long haul, they talk about its beauty and how much they love it. I think this is important to do that.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So when you say site visits, are we going to try it like in the up here where we have a site visit, where we do it once a year, where we let people or, or doctors, nurses that are interested in coming to Tumblr to come and check it out at a specific time? Are we just going to cater to someone wants to come this week and someone, you know? Are we going to kind of try to organize that? And maybe even piggyback with other communities that are doing the same thing so that, you know, for bringing people into the area? Because I, I, you know, I'd say either once or twice a year only, not, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Counselor Kerkalka?
Yeah, so on that it is, it's catering. So it, it depends on what there's a bit with, with is needed there. So right now it's nurses, we, we do have a shortage. Could potentially have a shortage. There's, there's a bit of movement. Um, one nurse is coming, um, I believe in September is we're talking about. Could be a bit of a holdback there, but there's possibly eight nurses leaving and maybe possibly a second one going back to school. So just to bring people up here on, like, once or twice a year, we might not need any positions filled to bring them here for. So to me, it's when somebody applies to Northern Health and they have Tumblr Ridge, it looks good, they'd like to come up and visit it. Northern Health also has some money, so I don't think it always has to be the district working out. I think it's just nice to have money there in case they run out or they, they maybe not bring this nurse up, but we want to bring her up for him, they individual up. And we almost received a third doctor when we did this. Uh, the only thing that held that doctor from actually coming here and going back to the place they practiced in was we didn't have the AP program that built it. That's the only thing that held it up. So that's, they, to bring them up to the Peace Region and hope to bring 10 people up here, we wine and dine them and maybe Chetwin might or somebody else might wine and dine them and then have them leave our community. It's, the concept is to bring here and hope we can keep them.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, um, we really have to rely on Northern Health to, um, provide a set of information if, if there is somebody wanting to, uh, come to town. I think, I think this is really, in my opinion, I think this is really a compliment to the attraction and retention piece to work collaboratively with Northern Health. Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just, uh, Counselor Kirby was talking about maybe piggybacking with other communities. I'm not sure that's a good idea because I know we're all looking for these healthcare professionals, but then you're almost creating a competition. Okay, we're going to go to Chetwin, we're going to go to 14th Town and Tumblr Ridge. If we're going to be looking for these people, we want them to come here and we'll treat them in what we did with, with the doctor that was potentially coming here. But I don't think we should share between other communities. I mean, if other communities want to do that, they can do that as well.
Counselor Kirby?
Thank you. Maybe I'm getting confused with site visits. So, you know, if we're getting, you know, going in and approaching students that are just coming out of, out of, uh, graduating, this is just for wine and dining whoever's interested. And, and I know that we have a, I know that there is a need to get doctors and nurses here. But it seems like we are taking on Northern Health's role in a lot of areas. And yes, I can see the benefits, but, you know, I also see that we've already gone over, like, we are doing a lot. I, I find that we've, we've upped our game a lot in the past five years. So it's just, what's, what are we paying right now on site visits? Nothing?
The last one we had, Counselor Kerkalka, was that last doctor, correct? And do you remember the cost on that?
I don't remember the cost. I mean, staff, I have to both supply that and I don't want to put staff on anything, but I know we helped, uh, a dinner, uh, a flight and, uh, bring a chairman to come hiking. So there was some things that were set up with no cost, but really, uh, it was hiking, there was obviously the visiting of the, of the community center. So it's not always just about money and, and, and doing it. Always, we did offer a flight, I believe it was, and that was done through staff, I had no, uh, direction there. Uh, Dr. Helm talked to Mr. Allin and they set some stuff up. I didn't go on the flight, there was room, I, I, I did not go as a counselor. I, two doctors went and another Northern Health representative. But it is, and I meant to ask Ms. Thompson, but I believe last time we said the budget was $10,000. I could be wrong on that, but being, it, I meant to ask that number earlier. But what it is, it is not coming from the colleges. So these people, when there's a vacancy at Tumblr Ridge, it pops up, they will apply for it. To me, Northern Health goes through what, what they're, what the criteria is to come here, we live in a northern community. You know, they do offer, I believe it's $4,500 if they sign on for five years, stuff like that. What we're looking to do is when that person is, you know, they're pretty sure that they, this really fits their need or their family needs, that, that's like, bringing them up here and showing what we have to offer, Community Center, uh, Vic Center, Town Hall, uh, whatever it is. It is to hopefully have that person buy in and that comes up here for a five-year term. And just what Counselor Lehman said is getting into a competition. I, I think that's what puts us off means like we need, is we're willing to do this. We have been. I mean, there was some conversation about, oh, geez, I'm not sure we should do that because Northern. the PRD's doing this, and, and, oh, maybe we're going to step on the PRD. Who cares? We're here to make sure we have doctors, nurses, lab techs, whatever we need, or our local residents that don't have to travel out of town for medical care. But I know that, that was a comment made at the PRRD, or you'd men, mentioned that comment before about, about sometimes stepping on toes, trying to get people here?
No.
Okay. You did miss something.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. This is not unique. Fort St. John has a welcoming package. Vanderhoof as well. A lot of other communities do. But it, just to clarify, it wouldn't be the district going out and soliciting or trying to solicit students or doctors to come here. It's really driven from Northern Health. Their recruitment system will identify, you know, two possible nurses to come here. Well, that's when we can get involved and, and try and convince these people that this is a community that you want to come and work at. So it, it wouldn't be a recruitment aspect of it, no. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I hope the people, we, Counselor Lehman, they hit the nail on the head perfectly. But I will speak to Counselor Kirby's point about taking on more responsibilities than we should in Northern Health.
Agreed.
So this is the situation that we're in, this is the world that we're in right now. You know, there's communities that go out to nursing colleges, and they hit these freshmen, first, second-year students that come into their communities. This is the name of the game, and we have to, we need to stay competitive. Whatever costs that we incur, we could potentially be spreading out over twenty, thirty years if we get the right person. So that's why I'm in favor.
Good, thank you. Counselor Kerkalka?
Yeah, so I didn't put a budget amount in there. I think that needs to be discussed by council. I believe last time, Counselor, I'll remember, it was a ten thousand, I don't want to just throw a number, that's kind of one of those.
Yeah, well, it, it would be, it would be best to have a yearly amount, right? So, I mean, my eyes, ten thousand would be a benchmark, I would say. It, it doesn't need to be used either. Counselor Norbury?
Can we, can we? Sure, responsibility. Can we throw this back at the health need task force? Is that an idea? What do you think it's going to cost?
It's possible. Counselor Kerkalka?
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to tell you that we need twenty grand. I think this is something council, that's why I was brought here, with no amount there. Five dollars, I was, I was going to reach out to Ms. Thompson about it the other week. I, I'll add my own motion to make the council a budget of ten thousand dollars. Thanks for all the good.
Okay, secondor on the amendment? Counselor Lehman, discussion on the amendment? Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd like to know what we've spent in the past. You know, I, I'm not opposed to ten thousand dollars, but it's just like when you put an RFP out, you've got ten thousand dollars to spend, I might want to come and just check our community out because I want to have a little trip, and I, and that might sound. But I mean, that does happen. So, you know, it's good to have a fund. I'd like to know what we've spent in the past and be close to that.
Okay, yeah. Ms. Thompson, you wouldn't happen to have that information, would you?
No, Mayor Bertrand, thank you.
I didn't think so. Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure I think we added a fifteen hundred dollars per visit last time. So I think if you put a limit to a visit, you know, you, maybe fifteen hundred dollars that we'd be willing to add, and that gives us at least six visits if you're going to spend ten thousand dollars a year. I just think, I mean, it's, just a.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Any other discussion on the amendment? Counselor Howe?
Like, if you've ever gone down there and your kid's got a potential broken arm or something, and you can't get them in there, and you've got to travel to Dawson, and then wait in the lineup at Dawson and get in for healthcare because we don't have an X-ray technician on, like, it's frustrating, it's all hell. And to be honest with you, ten thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket for our residents. You know, to me, it should be even higher than that. It should be, like, I'm talking twenty-five thousand dollars to do what you can to get these people to come in. And that way, they'll, they don't have to come back to us and say, you know, we needed two doctors this year, and we spent five thousand dollars each time, and I'm doing this, and we have these three nurses, and spent three thousand dollars on this, and we've got a bunch of spent, we need more money. To me, I think it's, it's money well spent. It's, you know, and we try it, right? Just try it. It's, you put a little bit of money out, see if it works. If it helps us get one or two, twenty-five grand, to me, is a drop in the bucket for us to get another doctor in, right? If, and same thing as for some, a permanent X-ray, a lab tech to come and stay. Again, if we had to pay that, I'd pay it as a bonus if we had to get these people to come to Tumbler Ridge. That's, that's to me how concerning our healthcare is in Tumbler Ridge. I mean, it, and, yeah, you're right, we shouldn't have to do it for Northern Health, but unfortunately, this is the times we live in. And I don't have any faith in this provincial government that we have in the present time so long, I don't. So honestly, we got to do what we got to do to take care of our residents, and if we've got a little cash in the bank and we can do that, why not?
Counselor Lehman, did you have a question? Called a question on the amendment? All in favor? Opposed? Carry? Thank you. Any other discussion on the amended motion? Called a question on the amended motion? All in favor? Carry? Thank you. Counselor Kerkalka?
Can the District of Tumbler Ridge Council investigate providing a house to TR health center staff?
Counselor Majewski, discussion? Counselor Kerkalka?
So, so this, this, I mean, I know Counsel Howery brought it up, but I mean, it was a discussion that was had at the committee. It was brought up by Dr. Helm. So the, the thought from the committee, and that's why we want it to be investigated, I mean, obviously through staff, but looking at purchasing a house within the District of Tumbler Ridge, and it's not given to the doctor or to the nurse or the lab tech to come to Tumbler Ridge, but it's something that maybe we put a stipulation that it's six months, that they're not to come to Tumbler Ridge, or it's a year. But they don't have to worry about coming here anyways, getting in here, trying to buy a house. I know that Mr. Solomon had an issue trying to do the same thing. His family, you know, trying to stay in our apartment, stuff like that. So that's why this motion came forward.
Okay. Counselor Norbury?
Mayor Bertrand, I mean, I think Counsel Kerkalka answered the question I had, and it's for incoming health center staff, not for existing. Yeah, I, I absolutely see the point. I know when I, my wife and I came up here, it was hard to find a house. I actually stayed down south while we waited, while we're looking for homes because there's not much of difficulty, so.
Okay. Counselor Kirby?
Mayor Bertrand, does it have to be a house? Can it be a two-bedroom condo?
Well, I thought we have condos available. Ms. Thompson, do we not have a condo available to Northern Health?
We do have one.
Okay. Counselor Kerkalka?
I can answer that. We do have one that nurses use constantly, whether it's the agency nurses or the new nurses coming to the community. But a lot of these, even new nurses now are coming with families. Doctors are coming with families. So that was the idea. I know it's been thrown around as councils, and as councils had discussion about it in chambers. So whether Mr. Helm has picked that up, watching our video, I don't know, but it did come up from him. I fully agree. You know, we, we talked about, I believe it was Will that, or Counselor House, or talked about, I mean, putting a car in or driving, putting bikes in there, and kayaks, there's, there's lots of those conversations around this health task force. Like, we say it's our number one priority. I took me seventeen days to get a ventilated refill. Seventeen days, I had to wait, with no ventil. Seventeen days, I had to go to a merge. Well, I wasn't having a, I can't go to a merge. Took me seventeen days. I am waiting to hear what Counselor Lehman has to leave, or his. He has to call more, like I said, so. That's how frustrating it is. Yes, we have three doctors, the alternative payment plan, but then now they're shoring nurses, possibly have a nurse moving out of town, possibly that one moves out of town, possibly one going to school. I, I, doesn't mean the house gets used. I mean, we have two apartments, so I just want, we have two. But one is used by Northern Health, and I believe we have one that gets used by contractors or whatever. That's still billed the district live-outs. L O T is still billed to the district even though we're giving them apartments for free. Just in case you're not aware of that. Right? So if I come in as a contractor and the district offers up the apartment, we have been still paying out their live-out, even though we're supplying them.
Yeah, interesting fact, too. Part of the collaborative committee in Dawson Creek, Dawson Creek's going through a crisis right now, about to lose seven doctors this year, and preparing for locums to come in, but there's nowhere for them to stay at the moment. The Boulteries House isn't complete yet, and that was really the intent of the Boulteries House and the Carriage House attached was to provide that area for locums to come in. So they're actively seeking a, a house for that situation, so I, I just thought I'd throw that in there. Any other comments? Counselor Howe?
Yeah, the recommendation that says TR health center staff, I think that that should be changed to healthcare professionals. I don't think that we are interested in providing housing to every staff member who's over there.
Do you like to make an amendment?
Yeah, I'd like to make that amendment.
Okay. Secondor on the amendment? Counselor Lehman, discussion on the amendment? Good catch there, Counselor Howe, I agree. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Carry? Thank you. Discussion on the amended motion? Counselor Howe?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we have talked about this at length. So if this is going to go to staff to look at a house, is an idea we can easily just go and purchase one in town? That's, that's the easy, quick option, done, forget about it. But the bigger picture here, when we had originally discussed this when I was on the task force, was looking at building something down by the high school that is in close proximity to the health center, and to have it similar to like three or four condo unit, or townhouses, or some type of a small cul-de-sac, some type of a community atmosphere for professionals. Because we talked about teachers that came to the community couldn't meet other professionals. They only knew those who were in their own place. So this was an idea that we could utilize always on short term. These people do not own these. This is a, maybe it's three months for teachers, maybe it's six months for doctors, but something along those lines is, is, could we look at doing something like that of building three or four townhouses? If you wanted to take it one step further, that's where we had talked about the, the, you know, providing them with an SUV, you get a, a kid who comes out of school in Toronto or Vancouver that's never driven in winter conditions, is terrified of it, and you tell them you've got a four-wheel drive vehicle, it's maintained, we've got, you know, winter tires on it, the, the whole idea just to make it easier for them to come here. When we put our healthcare professionals in our apartment here in Tumbler Ridge, they don't all even stay here. Some of them don't like it. Now, the last doctor, a female doctor that I talked to couldn't stay in it because she brought a dog with her. She brought her family with her. So she had to go stay in the hotel. So, so to me, if Stop is going to look at this, I hope that it's a little broader than just the easy, easy thing of going up, looking at real estate, what's available. You could buy this apartment, you could buy this house, and we've got it dealt with, where we could maybe look at it on, on a grander scale, what other professionals are missing in the community? And would this actually help? Would this help attract people? We spent a million dollars doing this, putting in three places. Would it be worth it?
Yeah, and I kind of have a thought there about possible lots that the district already own right now from, from, you know, defaulted tax sales or anything like that. Is there, is there an opportunity that we could, or do we have lots in town that we, the district owns that could be developed? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. The district does have lots for sale in different places in town, and yeah, it'd be something that we could look into, for sure.
That's an option as well. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. There's maybe somewhere out in the field, what about that complex beside the senior center that has three units?
Duplex there is, the two, two, yeah, yeah.
It's just something to consider, right? I don't know what the cost would be. I mean, it's, we, we definitely have to look at a bunch of different options, but.
Counselor Howe?
Well, even taking that one step further, I mean, I don't want to, I'm careful when we get into these discussions, but the guy that owns that land also owns the other lot next door. He is a builder. That, that option is there. Again, staff would need to look at that. Is it the right location for healthcare professionals in the wintertime? Maybe not. To me, I think they're, they're better suited to be closer to the community center, if that's what we're trying to do. But, you know, that's the thought on there.
Thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Mayor Bertrand, these are all great ideas. Are we, are like, we pricing, are we going to time ourselves out here? Like, this seems like it might be an important issue to happen quickly. I'm concerned about if we, if we combine the idea of a co-op housing, we may lose out on what we're, what I think the task force is looking for. And I could be wrong. I don't want to put anything in your guys' mouths or anything. I think the idea, sure. I just, I want to make sure we don't mistake this, what this is asking us right now. And just a quick point about the Boulteries House, has the PRD released the money? We're looking to be open this, well, looking to be finished, move construction this year.
That's good. That's good news. I have unfortunately heard that before, though.
Down 2020.
Okay. Any other comments on the amended motion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry? Thank you. Question-answer period, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand.